Okay, good evening and welcome to the Placerville City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. We are going to adjourn into closed session, but wanted to open it up for any public comment on the closed session items.
Sorry about that, Cleve. If anybody has any comments for closed session, please raise your hand. You can press star nine if you're joining by phone. You have three minutes to speak. I want to remind you when you have 30 seconds. Mr. Mayor, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so I'll just turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Regina. So with that, we will adjourn into closed session. Thank you.
Yes, I think it might be good, Mr. Mayor, if you could announce what shows on the agenda as to what we're meeting in closed session concerning.
Yes, thank you. So item one is conference legal counsel regarding existing litigation. And then item two is a public employee appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for those on the call, we are going to move off of this now to a closed session. We'll be back at around six o'clock. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Again, thank you, everybody. Today, we're going to be doing a little bit different technology, so excuse our one glitch already. And we're going to get going here. So with that, I will go ahead and move for roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, quorum is established. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to move on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public on item 3.1, which is an elections update, a verbal report from Ms. O'Connell.
You're muted.
You're muted still, Regina.
That darn mute button. Thank you. So I just wanted to quickly remind everybody that we have extended the filing period to actually tomorrow, 5:00 PM for anybody, actually 4:00 PM for anybody who wants to run for city council or for the treasure position. The extension was due to one of the incumbents, Councilmember Acuna, who did not file to run again. So that extended the filing period by five calendar days. So we're pushing that out until tomorrow, August 12th, 4:00 PM. We already have five qualified candidates, though, for city council, so I do want to mention their names. Mayor Saragosa, you are a qualified candidate, as well as Jackie No, Mandy Rodriguez, Tracy Bunch, and Jackie Apez. So congratulations to them. And again, anybody else who wishes to, you know, pull papers and get this done in one day, I'm sure it's still possible. So don't lose hope. So anyway, so we also have, after that period closes tomorrow, there will be a 10-day period for the public to come to the city clerk's office there at City Hall. And you can review the candidates' statements that they are wishing to publish in the pamphlet, voter's pamphlet. So we have four out of the five candidates are publishing a statement. There may be a fifth, so we'll stay tuned for that. So as so far, nobody has pulled papers to run for treasure. So don't be shy. So that sums up my report, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Any questions for Ms. O'Connell? Okay, seen none. Go ahead and open up for public comment.
All right, public comment is open for item 3.1. Anybody wishing to speak, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're joining by phone. You have three minutes, and I will remind you when you have 30 minutes, 30 seconds remaining. And I will take public comment from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Michael and council. Is this, pardon my lack of familiarity with, is this the open forum for items not on the agenda, or is this?
No, this is just pertaining to the elections update. That will be under item 7.2.
Okay, but so I'll wait and thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Jonathan.
All right, we have call-in user one.
Hey, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Excellent report by the city clerk, Regina. That was very human and in real language. Thank you. That was great information. Any word on potential city ballot items other than city council? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for item 3.1. Okay, so you know further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just for the rec, I don't believe there's any other items correct on our ballot, at least for the city of Placerville.
Right, there's, we have the measure air, sorry, measure R, which is the request to move the position from elected to appointed, but that's all the city has on the ballot besides the.
Treasure position, to make it a deplanate one. Gotcha. Okay.
I guess it further clarified the other initiatives that were attempting to get their signatures have not made the deadline.
That's correct. It would have needed to be, I believe, 88 days from the election day, which is November 3rd, 2020. So that would have had to have been to the county by last Friday, I believe.
So what happens to that, to that process? Does that automatically go on to 2022?
No, it doesn't automatically go. And John, if you want to jump in here, I believe the process still moves forward. It will go forward to the city council. The city council then determines if they want to make a special election for the item or put it on the 2022 ballot. Is there anything else, John, you want to add?
No, Regina, you're correct. Initiatives have 180 days to get their signatures. So there's still time for the various initiatives that we received notice of to obtain the signatures in order to qualify for the 2022 ballot.
I just wanted to make it clear that they won't be.
They won't be on this.
On 2020.
Still have options available, but. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, for the clarification. Anything else? All right, seen none. Make sure I have to look up to make sure I give Kara had any questions. I don't think so. Okay. All right. All right. So we will then move on to item 3.2, receiving file update on public records request. And again, this is Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you'll see, another report with the public records listed, you'll see that there are five in progress. We actually did respond to one of those today. It was, it was the one from McRock News. That one is complete, but we're working to to get these responded to. But also, there's a recommendation on the report to, to, I guess, if you want to continue these reports, I'm more than happy to. But I know that there's been a request to get this information up on the website. Haven't had a chance to do it yet. I hope to get it, get it up on the website possibly tomorrow. But we would like to maybe post this table on the city clerk's page where you can keep an eye on who has been requesting what, you know, what is in progress, what's been responded to, and hopefully make it a little bit easier for the public and save some time not having it on the agendas.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Any, any questions for staff at this point? Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
Okay. This is for item 3.2. Anybody wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Call-in user one, go ahead.
Good evening, council. I saw on the staff report that there's a request to either continue going forward with these reports or to stop them. I think it's a benefit. I'd like to see them continue. It doesn't take a lot of time and it's good info. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Last call for item 3.2. No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions from city council? Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Connell. We will now move on to item 3.3, which is the spring and mosquito bids, contract bids. And Ms. Neves has a verbal report for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Wanted to give you an update regarding the bid for the low road repaving project. We opened bids on July 30th. We had four bidders, and the low bid actually came in underneath the engineer's estimate, and it was Doug Veer Camp, general engineering. So we are in the process of reviewing their bid proposal package to verify their responsive responsible bidder status. And we, as it stands right now, we will be bringing in item before you at the next council meeting to approve a construction contract to them for both paving projects on your next agenda. So August 25th, we anticipate construction will start in September and conclude before the end of October.
Oh, that's music to my ears.
Yeah, for all of us that drive.
To my car.
My car.
Yes. That's, that's great news, Rebecca.
That is terrific.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments for staff at this point? Yeah, that was, my question was, when do we start?
I do want to caution everybody, you know, we do have utilities on these projects. And so that's, you know, we always do our very best to guess what we're going to find, but I have yet to find any utility projects or portions of a project here in town that have gone exactly as planned. So, but I, so I want to put that disclaimer in there. However, we will do our very best, and we have a very good contractor on the project.
And especially that area. It's an old area, so. I agree.
Yep.
We know you'll do your best. Thank you.
Never know what's underneath there. Okay, so with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up for any, for public comments.
Public comment is open for 3.3. I see no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Neves. We will talk to you in a little bit. Okay, moving on to item 3.4, comments by city council members. And I'll, I'll start with council member Taylor.
All right. Hello, everyone. It feels like a really long time since we last had our meeting. I attended a meeting that was hosted by Jennifer Chapman with the Friends of Clay Street. And we got, it was about the traffic plans, and we got a lot of really good feedback about specific concerns on, on Clay Street and where the specific problems are. So that was a good meeting with the community. I subbed in for council member Acuna at a LAFCO meeting and attended a phone conference with the White House regarding coronavirus and several webinars. And, and like, all parents in this community and in this country have been trying to prepare for this upcoming school year, which has been a somewhat overwhelming process. And school is supposed to start this week, and it's just amazing how little information parents still have. It's no, no knock on the school districts. They have an impossible job. It's just, it's a really tough situation, I think, for everybody. And then I also got a camping trip in, which was really nice. It was the first one with the new baby, so we had fun. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to encourage everyone to download the Code Red app if they don't already have it on their phone. We are going into fire season, and this is the app that's going to be how any emergency orders are communicated. So I was reminded by it by this hot, dry, windy day today. So I just encourage everyone to download that app and start, you know, making preparations and getting ready for this upcoming fire season. That's all for me. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, council member Taylor, and thank you for the reminder on that as well for our residents. Good timing. Council member Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Kara mentioned, it's been a long time. And I have my old notebook out from, the last time we were in the building here was on the 10th of March. So I appreciate everybody's efforts to get us back home. He's feeling a little better. Cleve is learning all kinds of audiovisual skills he never thought he needed at this point in his career. He looks a little bit like the man behind the curtain in the Wizard of Oz down here at the moment. But thank you to, to all our IT staff that worked to get us back here. I'll steal Patty Sundar and I'll talk about the great tour that I got from Susie Davies on the new Moore facility. That is absolutely a spectacular investment in this community. It's almost done. Furniture is arriving soon. And as is in typical Susie Davies fashion, she is orchestrating great ways, even with the COVID challenges, to make sure that the community gets to come in and see everything that has been done there. And I'll leave it to her and her organization, her board, to somehow begin to thank all the people that have been involved in that. And it's a lot of the usual players, and it's just, as usual, it's the community. So huge shout out to them and getting them through the frustrations of being in a flood plain and many other challenges. They stuck with us and we stuck with them. So thank you very much for that effort. Cleve and I self and both of our chief, Chief Rader and Chief Wren have begun the preparation meetings for power safety, power shut-off season. Happy to report that we are not only in communication with our local PG&E clubs, but we do have a, a link to an executive officer in San Francisco who's in charge of the program, and we're sure that we will have his cooperation this year. We're looking at a number of specific things to improve, or let's look at it this way, to reduce the outages in town to hopefully none. Strong promise from PG&E to real, to use real-time weather data so that we're not sitting here in the dark on a perfectly calm evening. So at this point, I think we have every reason to believe that we're going to have a good partnership this year with them, and we'll be, we'll be more, well, everybody's going to be far more successful. And lastly, I asked Cleve this question the other day as the year is flying by, and I'll throw it out to the group because it's never you think about, what are we going to do about the Christmas parade? And yeah, it's August 11th, but it'll be December something before we know it. So that's just something to throw out there to, to think about, how that's going to look this year. Kara mentioned school is trying to go back in, and before we know it, it'll be November. So that's all I have this name. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Council member Borelli.
Yes, I am going to continue my thunder. I was so impressed with that tour of the Moore workshop. And I tell you, Susie and, you know, I know she's just been responsible, and she's just seen a 20-year dream come true. And it's just, it's exciting, if for no other reason, to go and watch her and all her excitement, and she's so, but I really, besides all the help that it's going to give the clients and their new programs that they're initiating, it's also, they've thought a lot about the public. And they're going to do, like, they're capable of renting rooms, you know, like conference rooms, or, and they've got the most wonderful kitchen you can ever imagine. And they're going to be able to have, you know, if somebody wants to rent it to have a dinner fundraiser, and I'm sure dancing, and then they've got another room. It was in the Mountain Democrat, but they can put a stage in so they can have performances. It's, it's just absolutely, it's something that we have needed in this community for a long time. And I just, boy, my hat's off to her and everybody that contributed. And I like Kara. I've been doing a lot of webinars and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And sometimes this is almost, what we're going through, I think, is a lot of lessons well learned. I think in some instances, we're getting maybe a little more participation from people on certain things that maybe they can't turn out, you know, physically, but they can turn on their TV and, you know, and, I'm TV, the computer and join us. So anyway, that's, that's kind of what is going on. And I think in Mark's question, I, I don't know. Everybody's canceling stuff in December now, so I'm a little leery. I don't know whether it's going to happen or not. I hope we at least can get our Christmas trees up and at least, you know, get the decorations up and, you know.
Yep.
I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but it's not looking good.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. It, most things have been canceled, so we'll, we'll have to see where we go here. Vice Mayor.
Well, thank you, Matt. Let's see, one of the meetings that I went to recently was Elrata County Transportation Commission. And one of the, one of the important things that they discussed at that meeting was about their regional transportation plan. And that is a, it's basically a 20-year plan to, the forecasting, what, what the expectations and needs are in our community, and in the community in large, in terms of the county as well as the city. And one of the things that was, that kind of stuck out with me during that meeting was the fact that they really were not addressing in a very comprehensive way, as far as I'm concerned, enough to my satisfaction, the impact of Apple Hill and the city of Placerville. And right now is the time to, it's, it's out for public comment, and it's a time that we can comment on this plan and submit that for review to the Transportation Commission, who will take that into consideration as they finalize the draft. So I would encourage people, if they have concerns about that, to, to get on the Elrata County Transportation Commission website and look at their, look at the plan. And it's in section 12 of the plan that for review. And it's somewhat convoluted. I wish I could give you more. I don't have all of it in front of me, but the, the plan is, is a big plan. It's very comprehensive. It covers so many different areas, all the areas of transportation, whether it's busing, pedestrians, bicycle, traffic mitigation and traffic all throughout the entire county. So we'll, I'll be talking a little bit more about this later, but I want to actually put that out that people might want to take a look at that. I also attended Elrata County Opportunity, EDCOC, Elrata County Opportunity Knox, meeting. They are slowly moving forward. The COVID has, has put the damper on, on, on their plans in terms of developing. They're still working on it. So more to come there, but I know that they're, that they are eager to get that moving. And we'll probably.
How do you mean, get, get what moving?
The, what is, I lost the plan all of a sudden. They're, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, their strategic plan, thank you. And so they're, they're not, the COC is not actively working in terms of, of the current housing or, or shelter crisis going on. They're more of a long-term strategic planning process. And that's, that's their objective right now, just, just for clarity. And so they are working on that. And that's, you know, my takeaway from that right now.
So can I ask a question?
Of course.
So right now, they're not addressing, they're not addressing this influx of, it seems like, this homeless situation.
No, that's not part of the strategic.
That's not part of what they're talking about.
My home base is they're consulting that that's not what they were hired to do.
Oh, okay.
And they're more looking at long-term.
Okay.
And, and thank you. That's just me.
I was going to ask you one, one question. Do you know what the closing date is for the public to make comments to?
I believe it's the end of August.
End of August?
Yes.
I think so as well.
Because this is a hugely important issue for the city of Placerville. I'm wondering, I was trying to think if we could get it into the next, like, something in our next water bill, but it's going to be too late.
Too late.
To do that. But it'd be great to get, maybe we, Cleve, we can work with you to figure out some ways to, to really drive that message to our residents, because it's very important for them to, I think, address, you know, their concerns when it comes to that regional transportation plan.
I have a feeling, though, that a lot of it's going to still come back here to the Highway 50 thing, you know, on the Apple Hill. And.
The Highway 50 hotspot study.
The hotspot study. And, and that is being addressed.
Right.
So maybe that's why they didn't put as much, you know, towards it in, in the 20-year plan. I don't know. I, I just don't know. But I, because I think that's a separate issue that we're going to talk about.
Well, if, if you think about it, not only is it in the hotspot study, talking about what's going on on Highway 50, it's what's going on in Camino and all the Apple areas, and how that and.
How that affects us.
What the county is doing in terms of planning to affect the flow that goes on the Highway 50 that comes out and affects Placerville.
That's true, yeah.
It's, it's, you know, if you look at it, if you think about it, you have, people, if you have a house and your water's running off to your neighbor, and you change your, your landscape, and all of a sudden, all the water's flowing downhill to your neighbor, your neighbor's going to look to you for the water flowing downhill to, to mitigate that problem. It's the same thing with the traffic going on in Apple Hill. And so all that.
And I remember past that, that has been addressed, but it's never been anything concrete to really, you know, set some, put some teeth in it.
Right, make it comprehensive.
Right.
It's all been addressed by them telling the city that we need to do something different instead of them doing.
No, I'm, I'm, well, there's been other stuff too.
Yeah.
All right. Well, this is, and thank you for that, because it is, this is a, a big issue for our, for the city and for our residents. For myself, was on the same Zoom call as council member Taylor with some of the Clay Street and joining residents. We'll talk more about this later, because it's really about a more comprehensive look at all of our traffic issues within the city, as opposed to really a, a street-by-street way of us handling it, to really take that larger picture. But we did get some very good feedback on that Zoom call as well. Same, did a lot of, have done a lot of webinars, and had several SACOG meetings, I think, since we last met. There's a new equity ad hoc group that I'm part of that really is looking into sort of inherent, I don't know what the right word is, but inju, I'll just call it injustices within even sort of say, maybe how we do planning as a whole. And I think that the committee is working to, to make that as, I think, agnostic as possible, meaning that it's not, there, there's injustices across the boards for a variety of things. And so we're going to, we're taking a look at that and, and what that means ultimately means.
And population and.
Correct, yes. Yeah, exactly. And so it's.
Who carries the big stick?
Yes.
The financial stick?
Exactly. And we also had that conversation at SACOG as well, where there has been some talk from some of the other engineering departments that wanted to go to more of a formulaic basis, basis for funding in, in the four regions. We're sort of outside of this, us and Placer, but, and that conversation's still ongoing about whether it would be more formulaic or more competitive. And I, my, I think we'll end up still on the competitive side, because it's, it's, it's what makes the whole region more competitive by doing it that way, as opposed to going to a formulaic method for how SACOG puts out transportation dollars. But more conversation on that one to be continued. And that's it on my end. So with that, we will go to item four, which is our closed session report. And Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, with respect to the item one on closed session agenda, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Kim Johnston versus City of Placerville, the council did not take reportable action. With respect to item number two, I would like to turn that over to the city manager to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Thank you, city council. My pleasure to report in closed session tonight and discuss the city council, the opportunity to appoint our. tonight and discuss the city council the opportunity to appoint our current interim police chief Joe Ren as our permanent chief for the city um that has been approved by the city council and therefore effective immediately that we will remove the word interim from the front.
Great news um council members I don't know if you wanna or maybe we have Joe.
I think Joe needs to say something.
Yeah I think Joe should go Joe if you have any any words Chief uh congratulations.
Thank you I I was told that I had to limit my speech to forty-five minutes uh I'll see what I can do uh you know I I do um you know the weight of this responsibility is not lost on me I love this community you know I'm surrounded by great people daily not only the rock stars that work for the Placerville Police Department but the community as a whole um you know they uh every day I show up um I'm reminded that I just I don't have to be good I have to be great um and that's not uh that's not something that's lost on me and I don't take it lightly and I'll do the very best job that that I can do um with the fantastic team that I currently have so I appreciate the city manager um for his uh constant very constructive feedback during these last three months um I know Mr. Driscoll's also been a fantastic resource to me and and every one of the council members and the mayor um you know and all our department heads it's just I I really wish people can see uh the city government through the same lens that I look at it through um then they'll know how much you all truly care about uh about this city so with that I I think that's about forty-five minutes.
Thank you Chief uh council members um if I could make any comments.
Just hearty hearty congratulations and we're just looking forward to having you as our chief and doing business with you.
I would just yeah Joe you talked about the lens that you you either work through and the sit and the work that we do and I I would have to say that uh in this last three months and the challenges that this community has faced the comments that I have been proud to receive um have reflected your leadership the quality and dedication of our men women in our police department and their commitment to this community um Placerville Police Department has stood head and shoulder above many 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 other organizations and uh it was it's a real honor to have you take over at this point in your career and knowing your background more now and the knowledge and that you bring to the Placerville Police Department as its chief I think the citizens can be very pleased that we have you at the helm thank you.
Thank you.
I I just think it's the right person for the right job at the exact right time.
At the right time.
And uh and I've I've too have worked with you on a variety of different things uh now Chief Ren and uh and it has been a a pleasure and an honor to work with you and find you know that that everything that has been said about you is one hundred percent and I look forward to you know looking forward a very productive way for our community so thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor Councilmember Taylor.
Congratulations Chief we are very happy to have you the last couple of months have been fairly turbulent and you kind of stepped right in and have been doing an amazing job and we've just been getting such great feedback from the community about how responsive you've been and respectful and um we're just we're thrilled to have you and thank you.
Councilmembers and likewise as all my colleagues have mentioned uh Chief uh it's just been a pleasure to work with you in this capacity over the last few months uh it's been great you've been a great partner uh for us as council members to keep us in the loop about what's going on and knowing that no job is is too big or too small uh I I think it's a great reflection uh on you uh as well as an example that you set for the rest of the department uh so again thank you very much and congratulations uh on the appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you all right well all of our uh issues be like this because we'll just do this we'll we'll re uh do chief for you every council meeting and have a great time all right uh so we will uh move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor I'd like to move for adoption but uh as I have done in the past I would like to request your indulgence in moving out of fifteen one and fifteen two which I like to call the chief's reports uh and I would ask to move it up to just before consent calendar this evening.
I'll second his motion.
I would like to add to that.
Sure.
I would like to flip flop uh oral communication with uh written communication so that oral communication comes first.
That would be part of my amended adoption.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And we have a second okay um seen uh any other comments on it uh I will go ahead and ask for roll call.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay thank you the uh agenda is adopted with those changes and uh there are no ceremonial items tonight uh so we will move on to public comments uh this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the city council uh and with that uh as we we just said uh we're gonna go ahead and go to item seven point two first uh which is oral communications.
Thank you Mr. Mayor I'm just gonna start by reading a few emails that I received um people who wish to have this read um for public comment so this one is from Suzie Tripp and she writes dear city council and Placerville registered voters the Wapoomnas tribe is championing the four preserve historic Placerville initiatives on behalf of their proponents Michael Drobisch for the historic district and old city hall Kirk Callen Smith for the Druid Monument and Mandy Winicki Rodriguez for Wapoomnas tribal consultation status the four historic preservation initiatives were titled summarized and given official registration numbers by city attorney Mr. Driscoll then returned on July fifteenth the four historic preservation initiatives can be described as number one amend the general plan with the two thousand twelve historic district boundary from west to east Main Street which benefits building owners to seek out grants loans and tax breaks for restoring their buildings according to the Secretary of Interior standards number two to retain the Druid Monument in place and stop the plans for a square about at Cedar Ravine and Clay Street number three is to save the old city hall from becoming apartments and allow it to be restored as a hand-drawn fire museum and historical interpretive center number four allows the uh local Aboriginal native Miwok tribe the Wapoomnas to have the ability to protect archaeological sites with tribal consultation status to consult with the city on all sequoia projects and oversee that the their native artifacts to be saved rather than bulldozed and thrown in the trash by the city number five referendum to repeal the June twenty-third twenty twenty city council resolution number eight eight six five this is a petition to stop the city from desecrating the tribe's sacred site continuing to violate the city general plan and their sequoia documents for the Upper Broadway Bicycle Project voters will receive materials by mail and email and can be returned with signatures at the tribe's booth at the Placerville Farmers Markets Hangtown Leathers, Placerville Health Foods and Matty Wags you can view the full text for the initiatives on www dot realmiwoktribe dot com slash for history twenty twenty thank you for reading this best regards Suzie Tripp I have um two more this next one is from Louis Smith the third he writes dear city council the Wapoomnas tribe have extended a number of invitations to discuss their issues with the city at a public city council meeting in the town hall regarding their sacred site on Upper Broadway why hasn't the city set this meeting up yet the city seems to have time to set special meetings for nooses and cannabis why not time for their local Aboriginal Wapoomnas Nishtunmiwok tribe whose sacred site was desecrated by the city engineer why doesn't the city of Placerville post on the city clerk's election page Placerville initiatives and referendums being circulated like the state does while the tribe has been running the referendum against the June twenty-third resolution number eight eight six five we've been asking the city clerk for the Placerville voters' boundary map it turns out the voters' boundary map updated in two thousand nineteen is free and online we finally just got it from county elections it's a city map so why not city elections on July thirty-first here's the link for you to post on the city clerk's elections page so the other candidates can use it too and then there's a link you better be checking your donkey between covid and not having the map now we will be taking that extension to collect signatures please the state gives referendums until September twenty eighth to be on the November twenty twenty ballot thank you very much by the way the tribe will be filing a writ to a writ in court to enforce this best regards Louis Lawrence Smith the third cultural resources officer and then moving on to the last one this is from uh her name is Julie Robinson she writes uh this is regarding the noose on the city seal she writes I have a dream that the race-threatening symbols in Placerville are chosen to be taken down by the owners of them as they wish to be seen as less offensive harassing individuals and because of such we welcome other colors and races to enjoy our fun town in my dream I see a black-owned hair salon business on Main Street where beautiful black and brown people connect and laugh while getting their hair done I see Placerville famous for our our extension of our hospitality and not perceived past cruelty what's in your inclusive dream so that is all I have for emails that were submitted for item seven point two I'm gonna open this up to the public now please raise your hand if you would like to speak you have three minutes just as a reminder I will call out when you have thirty seconds remaining so we will start with Ruth please unmute yourself Ruth.
Thank you thank you very much good evening I'm nice to see you all again it's been a long time um I had a couple of different items and I'll be brief on each one the first one was a general comment about the Upper Broadway Bike Project and I I looked at the budget on that and I saw that close to one point seven million of the six point two million has gone to rate engineers for construction management work I assume that's what it could they could be doing more work I don't know um but I just wanted to propose the idea that possibly in the future construction management be brought in-house when I was an engineer working for the county in the Department of Transportation we did our own construction management one point six or almost one point seven million dollars could really provide a lot of employment for local people I believe Ray Engineers is out of Folsom Folsom which is out of county and I just think it'd be really nice to provide engineering work professional work locally to our local people so that was just something I wanted to point out and maybe you all could consider and the second thing I wanted to bring up was something for Cleve um with all the difficulties that we've had with the sixteen posters that were put on local businesses and subsequent some of the um bad speech and difficulties of the people across from the courthouse I think you all know what I'm talking about these all occurred in July there were some individuals who came to you and asked if there could be a proclamation by the city an anti hate proclamation and I'm wondering where that stands so I don't know when might be the appropriate time that Cleve could tell us about that uh my third thing was about more than a year ago the contract with the Arts and Culture El Dorado was entered upon and I know their plan was to do a lot of improvement and to raise a lot of money for construction and I'm just curious if any kind of update can be given to the public as to what kind of fundraising they've been able to do what kind of progress they've been able to make with that agreement that you awarded to that group and um how much time do I have?
Ruth you have forty-five seconds.
Forty-five seconds the last thing I just wanted to mention was I'm total agreement with what um Dennis Thomas said about the importance of Apple Hill I think Apple Hill is totally overbuilt Disneyland and I think the infrastructure in Camino and infrastructure in fifty absolutely cannot support it and I think we really have to look at how we can limit the activity up there I don't have answers but it's simply too big for what we can support and so maybe people have to pull lottery tickets for taking turns going up there and you have to have a ticket to enter I mean I have no idea but it is simply too much and the infrastructure cannot handle it and everyone else suffers and Apple Hill the actual growers I think should be a big part as Dennis I think said in finding the solution and also paying for the solution they're the beneficiaries they should be they should have some financial responsibility thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay Jane McInnes.
Good evening Jane.
Good evening nice to see everyone first of all I wanna thank you for the dialogue that this council has opened in the past with advocates for the homeless and I wanna thank you for that very important joint resolution between the county and the city council on homelessness I I believe that the Lord is guiding all of us in a good work and I believe he's placed you in your positions of authority just for purposes like this I'm aware that you're focused have to be focused on long-range needs of the homeless and that the county is being basically led by their provider to only focus on those long-range needs uh they're looking for a suitable site for some future navigation center but we have a much more urgent need looming over us we're eleven and a half weeks we're just eighty-one days away from winter's freezing temperatures with no winter shelter there are some private parties who are hoping to find suitable sites that could be maybe made available and then they're hoping to raise funds to secure and prepare such a site all of this in eighty-one days if they're successful it would be a godsend but if they're not successful I am truly afraid that our Placerville residents could be finding bodies in the streets this winter and I don't think that's an overstatement this kind of emergency is simply not appropriate for private parties to undertake it must be a function of government which is charged with securing the health and safety of all its residents I understand that the covid epidemic has created budget shortfalls for many counties and many cities but I would ask you to look into your budgets and look into your hearts and ask yourself if saving lives until next April isn't more important than one or two street repairs we have a much more urgent problem here and we actually I think have a unique opportunity to test the waters with a temporary winter shelter we know that within the next year or two a navigation center is going to become a reality thank God for that as volunteers work in twenty twenty to hook up an emergency temporary winter shelter with all the private resources like Alcoholics Anonymous and other secular and faith-based services it's inevitable that many problems are gonna arise but also many problems are gonna get solved so providing an emergency winter shelter now will not only save lives it can help us all to discover and work out the confusions and the difficulties that are certain to occur when we're setting up a multi-service navigation center in the future I think that we should think of this as a beta test opportunity it can provide a school for training volunteers it can establish working relationships between volunteers and service providers and thus it will strengthen all of our efforts in the future so I just wanted to say please consider how urgent the need is how great are the consequences of failing to provide for that need and I wanna thank you all for listening and if I can take an additional twenty seconds the ladies in my church truly are wanting to bake cookies and take them down to the police department to let the new chief and all of our officers know how much we appreciate them and support them and we're hearing uh kind of on the grapevine oh you can't do that because of covid so I guess what I'd like to know is can we do that and if not we'll wait until we can but Chief if you'd like some cookies we would really like to provide them to your officers. Come on down.
Come on down.
Thank you thank you Chief we appreciate it thank you everyone.
Thank you and thanks Chief.
Okay we'll now hear from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Good evening Jonathan.
Good evening Michael and good evening Patty and Brian Kara and Mark and Cleve and John Pierre and everyone that's there and Kara of course and Regina it was funny at the start of the evening when Gina was talking but you all said you're on mute. I am so blessed that we've made progress from a year ago I'm looking at a the notice of trespass which was on the letterhead of the sheriff and the police department for the poor homeless who were on the hill at Upper Broadway uh I'm so glad that we've moved beyond that to a. Uh, I'm so glad that we've moved beyond that to a joint resolution to do, to do something with the voiceless, hopeless, uh, the, the resourceless and many wrestling with mental illness, which I've, have with for almost five decades on the streets across America. I'm looking at, uh, nomadic shelter, at a headline on the Mountain Democrat. And let me parenthetically, congratulations, Chief Ren. Uh, and, uh, I loved your response to the cookies as well as your compassionate dealing with the homeless crisis, which it is a crisis. Uh, and also the city council. I'm speaking every meeting they have to the supervisors as well on this issue. Looking at June 26th, the Mountain Democrat, and the headline is nomadic shelter for the homeless might not happen. And the words from Paige Van De Car, she and, and Don have run the nomadic shelter for the last eight years. They have, they have thrown themselves under the bus for eight years. And all of us admire what they have done. I know everyone on the council takes their hat off and admires what they've done, and I do as well. They're exhausted. They sent out a survey to the churches and volunteers. Churches and the volunteers are exhausted in this arena of going from play, set up, tear down, set up, tear down, set up, tear down, another night, set up, tear down, the fifth night, set up, tear down. The last two years, two nights have been uncovered. We're headed toward a disaster that I believe the humanity, the compassion of everyone on the city council and the county supervi, board of supervisors, we can work together from November to the end of March.
Thirty seconds.
Can't let, we can't let them out where we would not leave our dogs and our pets. I congratulate Moore on their new facility. I congratulate the city and county. I, I lost my cat. She ran out the, up that ten-foot window. And, and I went to the city, the city animal shelter. I was astounded at the beautiful Taj Mahal that we have for our animals. There we take better care of our animals. Now there's fifteen or sixteen on the hill and up Broadway, twice of what it has been sometimes in the past. They're all somebody's sons and daughters, or all your grandchild, your grandson's granddaughters. We must, we can, together, we can do something, will not only glorify the God that
Can you, can you wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will. Thank you. We must and we can do something. There's talk about possibly even acquiring Hangtown Motel, which is a bite on the city and the county. And making that a, a shelter that would be a life change center toward a navigation center. Something must be done. There's places that, that are
Can you wrap up, please, Jonathan?
And I, I'm done and God bless you. I'll thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we have caller five two five. Please unmute yourself.
Caller five two five, uh, mute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, technology. Uh, my name's Leo Lynette Koshon, and I'm addressing the nooses in public places that you have discussed at the prior two meetings. Um, I'd like you to clarify with staff, uh, the motion you passed on seven fourteen, where it said two members of you council would discuss with staff moving forward. Um, the minutes don't reflect your great conversation, so I'm assuming that moving forward includes the ideas you spent so long on that were voiced by the vice mayor and then seconded by member Acuna, uh, to have a community co, uh, conversation. Uh, I think it's evident. I read all hundred plus emails that you got. There's an even split in the community. Um, it is very, very divisive. And I think waiting till Ju-antuary, when it's heating up, uh, both nationally and locally, even on our streets, is counter indicated. Uh, I think Sue Taylor and Michael Saunders, who are on opposite sides, are showing the way that they've been interviewed together by the LA Times. And I'm urging again that sooner is better, both for the community and then for planning. Um, because I've been looking and talking as a retired educator. Sacramento State has a minor in California Studies. And the Folsom Lake College has a survey of California history from a multicultural perspective. I know from personal experience that there's the, both expertise and eager students and professors that could take on some of the necessary research and the helping of building common ground and knowledge. Anybody that looks at the city website and the county websites and then does some research like I've done, there's stories everywhere. So I'm just urging you to provide the leadership so that this community, uh, can find a way forward through all of this. Not, you know, bad fun here, but not bury it like we did the stump, so it keeps haunting us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, we'll now hear from Mandy R.
Hi, everybody. I have a question. Um, one, does the city now own the shopping center where grocery outlet is? I don't know if you call it the Upper Broadway Center. Is that city-owned now?
This, this isn't a question and answer time. Um, if you want to pose your questions, we may have something afterwards.
I understand, but that's one of my questions. If, if you guys own that, um, or if we own it, I should say, is that something that we could use? I mean, the homeless hang out there anyway, so that could be something that could be a resource. And if some of the, the resources that are allocated to the homeless, uh, from the COVID crisis, if that can be kind of allocated towards something like that for the homeless. Um, the other thing is, and I know everyone's talking about Apple Hill and it, Tahoe is having a hard time. We're affected by it down here. And I just want to say the reason why I've been such a strong advocate for opening our state fully is because right now, everybody knows that our county is, um, not on full lockdown. So everybody's coming up this direction and even little local, uh, spots, swim spots, you know, in this area are being, you know, you show up there when no one's there. Now there's all kinds of outer town, out of towners and, and the trash from here up to Lake Tahoe is just out of control. So, um, you know, that's really why I've said, let's open this, this state and not keep it closed because now we're getting the brunt of it. So, um, anyway, that's all I had to say, but thanks you guys.
Thank you.
All right, this is last call for item seven point two. We'll hear from call-in user one.
Hey, good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, just wanted to let you know, um, lots of potholes in the city and you're working on it. That's fine. But really weird anomaly over on Coloma Street anyways. Um, near the intersection of Coloma and Spring, there's a speed bump and the speed bump has a pothole in it. So I don't know, maybe apply for a special grant for that or something. I don't know. And then on the mosquito road project, uh, just a heads up to the city that, um, the new water per, pressure reducing valves that were installed are good down to thirty-three degrees. And just a heads up, you're going to have problems in the future when, next time we have a freeze because I have already the same valve protecting my house. And last winter it froze and it shuts off the water when it does that. And you either have to wait for the temperatures to warm up or you get out there and you warm it up yourself so the water flows. So potentially you could have twenty people calling you guys on the next freeze and they're all out of water. So it just seems like the city did not really select the proper water pressure reducing valve for this project. And just wanted to give you a heads up that when it freezes, you're going to have a lot of calls. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, for your comments.
All right, Michael Munoz.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanted to call, keep it short. I sent a letter in regard to the nooses in public places. And, uh, I, you know, I, I just want you to know as a, as, uh, someone who's grandparents and parents spoke Spanish, that the nooses are, are offensive and, you know, people can say what they want. But if you're, if you're a Spanish-speaking person or come from that background, uh, it's, it's, it's different. Uh, but I do want to clarify a couple of things that I've been, uh, doing a lot of reading and, uh, historical significance to the noose is that it wasn't just three people who were hanged in Placerville. It was fifteen people who were hanged in Eldorado County. Uh, and, uh, I'll submit to you at a later date. There, I have their names and the dates that they were hanged. Um, so, uh, you know, now California is thirty-nine percent Hispanic or people of Spanish origin. Caucasians are thirty-seven percent. So the state is, uh, not predominant, but the, the major uh, race in this state now is thirty-nine percent. So that's all I have to say. I, I find the noose offensive. I find it scary. And, uh, I think my grandchildren and, uh, they're going to know about the noose. They know what it means. They've been watching TV, so I hope you'll pay attention to that and make, make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, Jennifer, uh, please unmute.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I guess quickly, I just wanted to say I'm a little confused about this. I think it was Dennis's comment about the regional transportation and this idea about focusing on Apple Hill. It is, this, this phenomenon is largely about Tahoe. And, you know, Apple Hill is certainly an attraction, but Tahoe is the main attraction, I think, you know, for these millions of, of cars. And so I agree, we all need to engage and thank you for the heads up that there's some really critical, you know, regional transportation thing for us all to engage in, and it was good timing with all these other discussions. So I just wanted to say, you know, Apple Hill is, is, I think, a small thing compared to the Tahoe part of it. But, um, I guess on the noose, I, I just want to say it is just amazing how provocative this is. And I just feel like, you know, I, I just want to say that to me, one of the things it symbolizes is actually suicide. I, I, you know, I, I just, I, anyway, I, I really look forward to, I certainly, you know, obviously there's going to be a lot of discussion between now and Jan, January, regardless of whether it's a, a formal convened, you know, topic or not, but, um, I, I think it's incredibly important. And I think it's, I, I think the stuff that's coming out of this is very important. And what's most important is just how we, um, navigate this dialogue and, and everything that this thing represents. But I just wanted to make that comment. I guess other than that, I know we're not on the traffic comment, but I'll just say, I thought it was really fascinating. As you know, my neighbor Tammy Dans, you know, did the thing with the yellow signs, the please slow down signs. And, and I've noticed just from being out, you know, actually going, running, um, you know, that that, that statement has actually gone up more reen. And, you know, I, I just think that it, it's pretty amazing, you know, how many, um, places are, are affected by this traffic phenomenon. Uh, I guess, I guess that's it, but I, I do appreciate all of the, um, you know, the efforts that are going on. Thanks a lot.
Now taking public comment from Regina.
Good evening, Regina.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks. My first time doing a city council Zoom call, so thank you.
No problem.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that in light of the events at the Nevada City peaceful protest by the Black Lives Matters Group, I think it was just a day or two ago. Um, you know, the day after that, which was similar, if you all haven't seen it, similar, um, if not more violent, actually it was very physical violence against the peaceful protesters. But the next day, the Nevada City Police Chief came out and made a statement. Um, you know, that of course that type of behavior wouldn't be tolerated. Um, and I'm just wondering if we can expect something from our community, from either city council, law enforcement, um, that, you know, I think majority of probably main street vendors and small business owners don't agree with that representation of our city, um, our town. And I just think it would be nice to have an official statement that, um, certain behaviors won't be tolerated. Um, and just, you know, what, what we are, what we are looking for when it comes to representation of our town. So I would love to hear from, um, from the city or from, um, the new chief. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, this is the last call for seven point two items that are not on the agenda. And we'll take, uh, Suzette.
Good evening, Suzette.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, that took a minute. Thank you for taking my call. I would like to beg your consideration in leaving our town history alone. It does not represent or symbolize what it's being portrayed as. And since it is based on false information, um, I think it's a bad idea to take it from all the people who love it. So I would just ask your consideration in that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And Jennifer, I see your hand up, but I believe you've already had your chance to speak. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think we can consider this the end of, uh, public comment for this item. Although, in saying that, there is one more hand by Michelle. Would you like me to allow her to?
Sure.
Okay, Michelle, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Good evening. Michelle, if you're still muted, please unmute yourself.
All right, I don't see her up anymore, so, um, I, you can go ahead and proceed, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Regina. Um, and this, thank, I want to sh, thank Regina in general for all the work during, uh, our Zoom meetings and everything else. It's an extremely difficult job to do, uh, and time it and, and keep it all going. So, uh, Ms. McConnell, thank you for, for everything that you've been doing here as well. Just two quick comments. One, uh, the city does not own, uh, the grocery outlet, uh, uh, parking lot or center. Um,
Be assured if we did, there would be a whole lot of changes.
Yeah.
Improvements.
So, no, we, we do not own that. Um, and, uh, actually, I think that's it. Um, so moving on then, yes.
This is, uh, an issue that's ongoing and it's from the, the, and the claims, um, grow in, in intensity and, uh, factual errors and, um, you know, threats and accusations. Um, and there's a lot of inaccuracies in what is being submitted and it's being submitted over and over and over. And as we're finding out, the more you say in, uh, a statement, the more people are going to take it as a fact and the truth. Has the city, have you and the city managers thought about how we should respond to getting a fact, factual statement out there? Is this same claim is, which of course is their right. They posted on a number of social media sites, uh, to the Mountain Democrat. Pretty much, uh, it's posted at the farmers markets and it's claiming that, uh, for example, city engineering department destroyed an ancient artifact. And I think that's, you know, a massive exaggeration of what took place. That's, I'll just use that as one. It was being repeated constantly in the community. We, your, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I, I, you're right. I mean, there's certainly a lot of information out there. Um, I think they have, as you say, they have their right to, to, um, make the comments that they wish to comment, whether they're factual or, or not and whether or not we want to, uh, make any comments, um, to that. So we can, we can definitely explore that. Uh, I will say, I think they mentioned something about a date of September twenty-eighth, um, for something about a date of September 28th for still getting things on the ballot. I can assure the public in Placerville, without even having to ask our Regina or our city attorney that that is patently false. Absentee ballots will probably be dropping about three days later in the mail to voters, because it's about 30 days out from the election. So, you're looking at early voting, plus absentee is going out the very first week of October. So, there is no way that any ballot measure would be, could go up to September, let alone past the dates that we've already had. And I don't know, John or Regina, you can certainly give the dates that were the deadlines, the state mandated deadlines. And I'm not aware of any executive order by Governor Newsom that extended the dates for propositions, both either locally or state. So, just, any comments would be appreciated, or if you have any.
Actually, I think Regina said it earlier, but the date was August 7th, I think. Is that right, Regina?
That's correct, John. It was last Friday, August 7th.
That's what I thought. And that's the deadline that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any other deadlines. And, you know, to say that the state would have a separate date for state initiatives, I don't know that they do, but I don't know why they would, because the initiatives are going to be on the ballots that you just mentioned that are going to be going out. So, in order for them to go out, I think most everything has to comply with that deadline date of August 7th.
Right. Thank you. Yes. And I'm not aware, I'm actually working on several of those initiatives, and I'm not aware of any timing. The only thing that had opened lately was the annual battle over a title and summary that happens between proponents and opponents of initiatives. But that is not any type of waiver of the deadlines set by the Secretary of State. So, thank you both.
Mayor, can I add a couple of things to that, please?
Yes.
And last week, when this came up a little bit, I want to add that I asked our city clerk Regina to contact county elections to find out, is there any way possible that they're aware of that it could still, something could be allowed to go on the ballot past the August 7th date. And their response was, no, that August 7th is the eight days prior to the election is the law, not the final date, that something could go on there according to county elections. That's right, Regina. What they told you?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, that's the date that's mandated by statute as well. So...
Right. Thank you. And like I said, I'm not aware of any executive order by the governor that either muted that or gave people extra time to do something. We still have an election on November the 3rd, and those dates aren't changing. So...
Mayor, I can, one more comment I want to make. There was a statement that was made that the Wapo Mestra has offered to meet with the council in a public meeting. That is true. They have, that request was a response to my request, that they sit down with myself and a couple of city council members to discuss their issues and try to find a solution. Because I think there are solutions to the issues that they have. They declined meeting with me and a couple of council members, and only responded that they would only meet in a public meeting with the city council. So, just so you know.
Thank you for that clarification. And I'll just make one other quick one. And the reason, it was evidenced even by this last call that wasn't able to actually connect is, you really can't have a conversation about our logo and Hangtown and everything else in a COVID environment where we can't even necessarily hear every single speaker that called in or sit in the same room together. And that's why we're at least looking at it until January of 2021, where we can actually have real conversations, assuming that we're going to think, hopefully, and I'm knocking on wood, that we can actually sit down and be in a room together. Because this is not a environment where we can have a real good discussion with people. It's just not the right format. I've seen this thing at the legislature where you can't, they've actually cut off people from speaking because it's, either they can't hear or there's problems. And it's just a really bad way to handle our type of government, whether it's at the state, federal, or at the local level. And so, we aren't going to be doing any meetings on this issue until at least January of next year. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. And I thought that last call that couldn't connect was a good point to make, why this is just not a good environment to do it in. Thank you. Okay. With that, we go to, do we do written? And now I forgot.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. We did written?
We didn't.
No, we switched.
We tried, we didn't.
That's right.
We went oral.
That's right. Okay. So, sorry. So, we're going to go on to item 7.1, written communication.
Now, Mayor, Council, Regina, can maybe come on this better? You know, you have several lists of your comments under written comments that were submitted. And I believe the majority, Regina, you can say, were related to the news on our local, et cetera, those sort of things.
Correct.
You have comments, or you have received.
Yes.
I want to also mention that I have actually two more that came in, actually almost in the, leaving the office to come down here today. One was from Sutainer regarding item 12.1. I believe it is, yeah, 12.1, or excuse me, 12.2. Anyway, regarding the old city hall building. Yeah, it is 12.1, thank you. So, she's submitted a letter objecting to awarding the contract, basically. I didn't have a chance to make copies of that for you. I apologize. Time did down here to get me started. So, you do not have copies of that before you. One, I didn't know that came in. And I came in, also received one letter as I was about ready to leave today from Mr. Leo Bennett Kachan, who spoke to you early under oral communications. And it's basically regarding the items he spoke to under oral communications.
Got you. Yes. And we all have our packet of email correspondence that came through. I've gone through every single one of these myself. Regina, I didn't know if there was any other comments you wanted to either read or comment on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to mention that I did also receive some voicemails, just maybe about three regarding the news. All three of them against the removal of the news from the city logo. But I also just want to mention to the public that, you know, every email that I get that is intended for the city council to read, I forward it on. Some do specifically request that they be read aloud. And so, I try to do that for them too. But I do, if I, I know I received so many this last time, and I wasn't able to acknowledge every one of them. I tried to respond to everybody who sent something. So, if I didn't respond, I apologize. But I have forwarded everything on to you. As you saw, there were probably 110 pages worth of comments. And these are all public record. So, but again, I just want to just let the public know that that's why some are read aloud and some are just emailed and forwarded on to the city council to read prior to the meeting. So, and any that are received after the meeting, like this evening or tomorrow, those do also get forwarded on to the city council, and they're part of the record. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. And again, thank you for the work on all this. This is not an easy thing to do. So, we appreciate your work on this. Okay. Then we will move on to, oh, wait, we moved item 15. So, we will move on to item 15, which are city manager and staff reports, and item 15.1, which is our July police report from, and I will scratch out interim and say, it's Chief Ren.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Again, before you is our July 2020 crime statistics to comparison from July 2019. As you'll see, we're up in all categories for the most part, or we've stayed relatively stagnant. Again, we track to our sexual registrants. We've got a total of 37 right now. And that's, again, up from last year, where we hovered around 22 at this time. You'll see a spike in traffic stops and traffic citations. Again, that's a direct result of our Officer Traffic Safety Grant, where we focused in on comments from our community survey, where community members had indicated that traffic and traffic safety was one of their top priorities. So, a lot of stops, a lot of warning citations issued. And unfortunately for some motorists, due to their dangerous driving habits, did receive citations. We're going to have to explain that to the judge later. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer if I can.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Colleagues, any questions for Chief? Okay. I did have one. I think you kind of, although I think you sort of already answered, and that was just the uptick in the citations and traffic stops up from, you know, from last year. Any other trends to that beyond what you mentioned just right now?
You know, I think the biggest is, we developed our strategy on how we're going to utilize the limited resources that we have, i.e. our officers, and how we're going to address any kind of crime issue or any issue in the city, traffic being one of those components. So, we really, we've categorized our enforcement of our traffic details. And we do it by data-driven. We do it by complaint-driven. And we do it also by officer-initiated activity, which is our patrol officers throughout their shift. When they see gross motor vehicle violations, they take traffic enforcement action. So, we've focused in more on our data enforcement. And that has to do with like crash data, obviously injury being top priority, second closely by property damage, traffic collisions. And then, that's followed by citizen complaints of different traffic issues throughout the city. And sometimes that traffic data and the complaints are overlapping. So, we kind of kill two birds with one stone with that operation. Other times, we respond to community complaints of traffic issues, and we take a look at an area. We run radar. We set up a trailer, and we just gain, we gain a better understanding of what the complaints that are coming in. So, other than us just being more active and having that opportunity from the Officer Traffic Safety Grant to conduct these details, it's just our approach that's changed. That's where you're going to see an increase in officers out there trying to make the roadways a lot safer for the community.
Great. Thank you, Chief, for that information and the clarification.
Go ahead and just one first.
Yes.
Good evening, Chief Ren. Congratulations. Chief, is this information being posted every month all across the department's various websites and social media sites?
So, I talked to Shirley about that, and we're trying to figure out how to accomplish that. I'm not a computer guy. The only thing I did is I expressed a desire to have it up there. And I know she's working on it. She's also working on a component for our social media sites. So, it is a priority. It's one of the many things on her desk that she's trying to get done for us. But it's available to, the information's definitely available to the public. You know, they can come get a copy of this, or they can call me, and we can talk about it.
Great, Chief. It's very readable, very user-friendly. You can clearly see what's going on. Calls for service, traffic, the traffic was the big one this time, obviously. Huge difference in the last, you know, before last year's. So, I think it's really important for our citizens to have quick access. Thank you for all your effort.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yep. And I think it's, and to Councilmember Acuna's point, the more we can get that information out there, the more our, maybe our area, our area residents and our visitors that like to maybe drive a lot faster than they should be, know that there's a much greater chance of getting cited for those violations. Okay. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
All right, public comment is now open for item 15.1, the July report, the July police report. We'll start with Jennifer.
Hi there. This, I just, hi, I just wanted to say two things. I guess, one is, I subscribed, I guess, to some kind of news feed. And so, I get little updates from the city of Placerville. I don't even know what I signed up for. But I really appreciated the little information piece about the bears in town. So, thank you. It was really nicely written, and it was really good information. And then, I guess, other than that, I just wanted to say, you know, it's this whole thing about, since it's related to this, it's just this whole idea of automated enforcement and just taking a hard look at that. And I just hope there's openness to it. There, you know, San Jose and San Francisco are really, you know, kind of leading on, trying to just pilot test it. And I just feel like whatever the barriers are, as far as concerns, I think that it makes a lot of sense, because it's just hard to have enough people to catch everything that's going on. And I think having that 24/7 presence that way would really make a difference. Thank you.
All right, last call for item 5.1, public comment. 15.1, excuse me. All right, Kirk Smith.
Evening, Kirk.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted you to know that the microphone for Cleve Morris, Mark Acuna, and Dennis Thomas cannot be heard. They're, everyone else you can hear clearly, but for some reason, the mic isn't working for them. So, just thought I'd bring it to your attention now. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. I think we just, we'll just, we'll all just talk louder. But yeah, thank you, Kirk. That's helpful.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, Chief, thank you very much. We will move on to item 15.2. This is our July Fire Station 25 report from Chief Cordero. So, always a pleasure to have you with us, Chief. Laura's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You've been provided the monthly stats for July for both Engine and Medic 25, along with the call breakdown and the call types. I would like to bring your attention to, on page three of the report, the monthly statistics. As we're rolling through this now, there's about eight months worth of statistics that are on there. And that bar graph's starting to get a little cluttered. So, if it's the pleasure of the council, we'd like to transition that over to a six-month rolling comparison, just to make that bar graph a little bit easier for you to read, and to kind of reduce some of the clutter on that, if that would be acceptable.
That makes sense.
So, we'll make that transition for next month, and I'm happy to answer your questions at the council, when you have the calls for Station 25.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Cordero? Yes, Councilmember Taylor. Oh, Taylor, you're on mute still.
Gets me every time. Thank you for this report. And I just noticed for Medic 25, the medical aid, it does kind of jump up this last month. And I was wondering if there was a reason for that, if it was COVID-related, or there was some other reason.
That's a good observation. I don't believe it's COVID-related. What we've kind of noticed over the last few weeks is not so much in the city of Placerville, but in the county, the increase of calls primarily up in the Ice House, Crystal Basin area, as well as the Coloma Lotus, Cronin Ranch, all those recreation areas. So, which draws Medic 25 out of the core into those outside areas. So, I speculate that that call bump is being impacted by most of medic units on those outlined recreational areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Varelli.
Chief, what does move slash cover mean? What does that mean?
So, yes, within our system for both the engines and the medic units, we have a move up and cover program. So, for example, if the engine of Pollock Pines goes up to Kyber's, we move Engine 25 up the hill. We move Engine 28 from Shingle Springs. And the medic units do the same thing. The medic units are a lot more fluid to try to provide the best coverage throughout the county as possible, which a lot of times, we see the medic units, the ambulance is driving up and down the highway and around. A lot of it is move up and cover to strategically locate those pieces of equipment to best suit the needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, as always, I think I always have the same question, and that's illegal campfires. How are we, are there more of those popping up? Or how are we doing out? That's always, especially as Councilmember Taylor mentioned earlier in her comments, we're in fire season and always worry me.
Well, I agree. It's always a concern of ours as well, especially in the city of Placerville. And, you know, this year... And, you know, this year, we've had a couple of small fires. It seems like maybe not quite as many as we've had in, you know, last year or the year before. We're certainly keeping tabs on that, especially as we're in August now and for this county, typically August, September, and even into October is our prime fire season. So, you know, crews are keeping around that, but to date, it's been fairly minor, I would say at this point, with just a handful of small fires.
Great, that's good news, thank you Chief.
That's really interesting that the statistic with the medic units having to cover out into the forest because of all the huge surge of maybe not so experienced wilderness adventure folks. I know the Confluence over there, Highway 49, has been like a constant training program for Plaster County and I guess Eldorado County too, for that matter.
That's correct, yes, it's been very busy down at the Confluence. They've been having multiple water rescues weekly and on the weekends, sometimes three, four, five a day, so it's been very busy down there.
It's going crazy.
Thank you, thank you Chief.
Yep, thank you Chief, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 15.2, we'll start with Jennifer.
Hey Jennifer.
Hi there, you know, I think I might have just gotten a little confused about that transition from these two, but I will say it's good to know, I hadn't, I just, just about the response up in Ice House because that's definitely a hotspot and so I just appreciate that, you know, mutual aid and just raising awareness about that, so thank you.
Thank you Jennifer.
Barbara Rogers. Barbara, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Barbara?
We can't hear her. I think she's talking.
Yeah. Okay, I think we can go ahead and move to the next one, Regina.
All right, I'm just gonna do a last call for item 15.2. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and Chief Cordero, thank you very much for the report, as always.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we go, I can ask my colleagues to consider, I've asked it last couple of times and so has Councilmember Taylor to move this up. And, you know, these are the two critical services that are just a whole variety of reasons to the city and to have it, have both of the Chiefs is really an honor to have their time, as busy as they are, and to have this earlier in the agenda, maybe a permanent switch, if we'd consider that. And the other thing is to have the larger audience so that this information can be shared on a broader basis we can communicate with. I talked to Cleve a little bit and he suggested some magic number stuff and ways to do that so it would go up and it still makes sense.
Is that a mayor's prerogative on the agenda item?
Yeah, if the Council desires to do that, we can rearrange the agenda like to, the Council, it's actually kind of spelled out in your Council app, but we can shift that around in direction from all the Council really. If you're in favor of moving those up, I would recommend we move them up to item four, not have them part of item three, but have their own item, item four, State Manager and Staff Reports at that point.
Right after closed session report?
Right. So what to do, you have to shift everything down.
Okay.
Okay.
Right after, right after announcement, so.
Probably can't take a vote on it, but we can do it.
Yeah, I think exactly, I mean, we just.
We keep doing it, so it just makes sense that, you know.
He's gonna keep doing it every meeting anyway, so we might as well, at least through the end of the year.
Yeah.
Stop it now.
Yeah, I mean, it is good information, I mean, I, I mean, just like the last meeting, you know, that we had some talks about the sex offenders that had been, sort of, that got introduced into our community more so than we've had in the past with some of the releases going on from state prisons. So it really is important to have that public facing information out there in addition to our fire.
I want to recognize Chief Cordero and now Chief Ren. Chief Cordero is nice enough to start this and keep this going and, you know, providing fire services is not only critical, but it's also a big part of our expenses operating the city.
Right.
Chief Ren, I hadn't made inquiries before and was told that it was, you know, not doable, you know, annual reports, you know, crime reports in every, this is, that's their bread and butter and so Joe has brought this forward and I think it's a great product, so.
Right, and, you know, it gives us a chance to, if we have any questions for the, you know, either the department, it gives us a chance to ask them and maybe get things clarified and whatever.
Right, I agree, and, yeah, and we've had some lengthy council discussions recently as well, so it's, you might lose a little bit of that when you get to item 15. Yep. Okay.
So what do you want from us, Cleve, or did you get it?
Is that good direction? Some direction there, all right.
Mayor, if I could please, before you move on, we have one more Staff Report under this item, it's not just on the agenda, but just an update that our Development Services Director, Pierre Rivas, would like to give you regarding our next Housing Element update. All right, Pierre, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay.
Thank you Pierre.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I actually have two quick reports. One is just a reminder, I just want to remind everybody the importance of the U.S. Census, the 2020 Census that's coming up. I understand that there's gonna be more of a shortened deadline now towards the end of September. Staff has worked very closely with the U.S. Census Bureau over the last, probably the last year and a half, ensuring that the mapping is correct for the city, that we have up-to-date addressing, and also that any of our housing permits that came in where it looked like the house was gonna be completed by a certain date, those were submitted to the Bureau so that all of those addresses would be included in any mailers or any correspondence from the U.S. Census Bureau. And also to remind everyone that it's, we really want to have an accurate count because a lot of monies, different grants, monies that come from the federal government and actually through the state as well, are based on population, so it's very, very important to get an accurate count. I encourage everyone to talk to their friends and colleagues to fill out that application. I did mine a while back, it all took, I think it took about two, two, three minutes, which was surprising because in years past, it probably took me a half hour to 45 minutes to fill it out, it was pages, pages long, so it's a very short form, do fill it out, very, very important. The next item that Mr. Morris referred to is our Housing Element Update. We're diligently working on that. Part of the update process is to reach out to the public. We have created a Housing Element Survey where we ask the public to review the existing goals and policies in our existing general plan and then comment on those and also they have the opportunity to provide a narrative of any additional comments besides just checking the box. So with that, I'm gonna try and see, I haven't done this before, but I'm gonna try and use the share screen and bring up a real short PowerPoint on that.
You did it Pierre.
We can, we can see his email.
He's sharing the screen.
You're doing good Pierre.
Doing better than I can.
So can everybody see this screen?
Yeah, we see your email, like your inbox.
Apparently all we see is your inbox, your email Pierre.
Oh, so you can't see, because I have the Housing Element Update up on my screen.
No.
If you can't go in there and close your emails, maybe that will, try that again.
Okay, how's that? Can everybody see that?
Good.
Perfect.
Great, okay, thanks Dave. Dave came up here to the rescue to help me through this, I wasn't able to do it. Anyway, so, so this is our Housing Element Update, 2021 through 2029, and you can see this survey is accessible at the website address there below. So one way everybody can access this is they could go to our homepage, the Plasterville City website, go to Government, where you see the red arrow, and then from Government, we would go to Development Services Department and then go to Announcements. And then under Announcements, then, you could see under Planning Division, then, the Housing Element Update, it has the Housing questionnaire and they can access it that way. And a second way is they can go to Planning Division as well. And it's there under the Housing Element Update. So we do have folks that, that they're interested in our affordable housing programs and our Housing Element, they can go to this portion here on the update and then they can access the questionnaire as well. And then here's the questionnaire. So the questionnaire looks somewhat like this. It has all the different questions on there. In addition to being available on the city's website, in mid-August, we're gonna send a postcard mailer to targeted organizations, housing advocates, housing industry organizations, developers, churches, social groups, people that may be interested in affordable housing, we'll send them this card. And then also, we're gonna insert a flyer within the September 10th Utility Bill, so everybody will be able to get that flyer within your utility bills as well. And we'll also have hard copies available here in our office. So we're gonna just do our best to get as wide a spread of our housing surveys as we can and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on our survey.
Thank you Mr. Rivas, any questions?
No. Well, complimenting for going, going.
Nice job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we can open up for a public comment. Yeah. Oh, Councilmember Varelli.
I will share one thing, I have been remiss in not filling out my census thing and I had a very nice gentleman come to my door the other day and he had his little, you know, and I apologized to him for wasting his time and, but he, they're, so they're following through with the folks that are, you know, following up on those of us that don't do our job.
Or tardy, that's actually good to know that they, they.
It was, yeah.
Coming up to our little town to.
Well, he's actually a resident of Plasterville, so they've hired locals.
Great. Regina, we'll do a public comment on the Housing Element. Did we lose?
Sure, maybe we lost Regina, so I'll make the announcement, is there any public comments on regarding the Housing Element, it's not a standardized item, but just a report that Mr. Rivas just gave. If you have any comments, please raise your hand.
No public comments, Mr. Mayor, and sorry about that, my spacebar seemed to get stuck.
No problem, it's, this is, this is the world, this is the world we're living in right now, so, thank you. All right, Pierre, thank you very much for the report.
You're very welcome and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. And one, one last thing, we went, we actually pulled somebody that didn't have a lot of experience with the Housing Element and it took them all but eight minutes to fill it out, so encourage everybody to fill it out, you should be able to get through it rather quickly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're done there, all right, we'll go on to Consent Calendar. All matters listed in the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless any member of the Council wishes to remove an item for discussion. And moving on to item 8.1, or the whole thing actually. Anything anybody wants to pull? See none, do we have a motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? We'll go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Public comment is now open for the Consent Calendar, we'll start with caller 525.
Hi, this is Leo Bennett Koshon again. I'm asking you to clarify your minutes for the July 14th meeting. It captures just the bare outline and I think, you know, I have had other councils have a conversation to clarify what the mayor is stating, you know, with all due respect, it's not how I interpret it, that this meeting that was amended by the Vice Mayor, which I assume captured the Vice Mayor's intent to have a substantive conversation that required planning and then seconded by Member Acuna between two council members and city staff, is now going to be happening maybe in December, if I'm understanding how the mayor is interpreting the motion, so hoping for a bit of clarification to clarify the minutes, so we're all literally on the same page, thank you. Can I make a comment on 7.1? I waved my hand and didn't get recognized, it'll just take 30 seconds.
Sure.
So 7.1, the letters split evenly and obviously you have a lot of controversy about history that I wanted to share on behalf of myself and others, I need a moment. There's a personal component, having nuisances everywhere because some of us have lost loved ones to that means of suicide and I ask everybody to think as we argue and argue and argue that for a small group of us, we're very vulnerable to it and we still have relatives that do suicidal ideation and we just don't need that around. Thank you for listening, bye.
Thank you.
Last call for a public comment on item 8, the Consent Calendar. Call in user one.
Good evening Council, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so Consent Calendar, item 8.1A, special meeting of July 10th, I believe. Looking through that, I couldn't tell exactly what the discussion was about. So if somebody could please insert a sentence for posterity, you know, people looking back from the future, what the discussion was about, because looking at that, no one has a clue. So if you could please amend the minutes of that to reflect what the discussion, general discussion was or topics. And given the last caller, I suppose maybe we should ban cars because people park them in garages and smoke themselves to death, that's all.
All right, no further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a first and a second, correct?
Yes.
Mayor, I just ask on both of those minute items, first on item, the second minute, which is our regular meeting, July 14th, I just want to confirm that they actually present what you, what your motion was on that date under that item that was referred to. Actually, under item 12.1 on that item, so the motion that was made on July 14th is what's been referred to. So, the motion that was made on, uh, July 14th, that was referred to, I believe, was what their action was. I just want to make sure.
Dave, I'm telling the brother looking at that. The question is, I guess come off the timer too, and it was, it was, my intention, uh, about a particular item that, you know, until the COVID crisis is over, and we can have a community chat in person, you know, 150, 200 people. I don't feel that, that the issue, the news, the what have you, will hang down, it can't be properly addressed. Zoom being, as Mayor mentioned earlier, on another item, just isn't going to work. And, um, and I guess with the vice mayor and my discussion, we were thinking that in January, that that council and, and city staff look at the situation with the COVID, with the pandemic, then determine at what point in calendar year 21 would be appropriate for that council to have that community chat.
Right. And that, and that is reflective in the, in the minutes?
And if there was any concern for having two other council members, perhaps just to monitor the staff, you have the possibilities of when a large venue meeting is going to be a, a real, a reality in next, sadly, it's not going to happen this year, the way we're going.
Well, except that it is specific January, I mean, so maybe we need to, because it says, uh, to bring it back in Janu- oh, to set a date, I'm sorry, I misread it.
For, for, yeah, for further discussion.
So, in January, we, we will, yeah, for further.
So, that, uh, I guess perhaps the clarification that I would make as the vice mayor would allow was, is that there wasn't the intent for the staff to be ready to act in January.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. Because I said, I brought it up, and I said, we shouldn't be specific.
Because that would imply that you would be preparing staff reports in November and December for the council meeting in January.
Exactly.
That's my understanding too.
Yeah. Did, uh, I agree, you agree with that, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I remember.
Sadly, we just have to face the reality of the, the medical, the.
Well, I think this is pretty, I mean, says what it is.
Emergency. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's reflective of where, where we're, my comments, as well as, um, where, uh, the council, council is.
The other, the other caller had the question on the, our meeting of July 10th.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that also. That was simply a closed session meeting. There were no, reported line of time, closed session, and John wants to, uh, comment on that, but therefore, there's nothing to, to this minute.
Right.
I'd be happy to. Um, the agenda for the closed session indicates that the council was going to talk about initiation of litigation on, I believe it was four or five cases. And that's what is required under Government Code and Brown Act to be on there. Because it's closed session, there's no detail given when you do the minutes. It reflects that council met, just like the agenda for that closed session meeting reflects to discuss potential initi- initiation of litigation. So, you don't go into any description of what that litigation is. Uh, and by law, that information is confidential.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for that clarification. Okay, so again, we have a, a first and a second. Um, we'll do roll, roll call vote.
Mayor Sargosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, moving on, uh, we, nothing was pulled, we don't have any ordinance tonight. Uh, so moving on to item 11, uh, which are public hearings, and it's item 11.1, Cannabis Appeals Hearing. Um, this will be, continue to a special meeting of the city council, and Mr. Morris has this for us this evening.
Yeah, Mayor, due to, uh, looking at this, with your meeting, special meeting on, on the cannabis hearing, we continued that to this date. Unfortunately, due to workload and setup, we have not been given that already. Plus, we feel that the time constraints for that action requires a special meeting again. And therefore, we've scheduled that for August 20th at 6:00 PM, uh, a special meeting at that time to continue that hearing. So, all we're requesting this time is that you, uh, have a motion to continue that hearing to August 20th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions?
No, no, I'll move, so move. You have a question?
No, I don't.
So, we have, uh.
I think the explanation was sufficient, so, you know, why we're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it after a second.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Um, any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 11.1. And we will take public comment from Sarah Wendell.
Good evening, Sarah. Sarah, you may be on mute still. Here, Regina, I think we can go to the next caller.
Okay, I'm just going to make this the last call for public comments for item 11.1, Cannabis Appeals Hearing. Okay, I see no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we have a first and a second. Uh, do we have any further comments from council? All right, seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Sargosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Do we ever get to, do we ever get to have her come back for the candidate?
She was muted.
I want to hear from her.
All right, so that item, uh, passes unanimously, uh, to continue the item till August 20th, uh, meeting. So, we'll move on to item 12, uh, Discussion and Action Items. And item, on to item 12.1, uh, which is Adopt a Resolution Approving a Contract with Nikon Incorporated for Competence Hall Vertical Shoring and Horizontal Bracing in the amount of 131,998 as part of the Old City Hall Roof Replacement Project. Um, and to approve a $74,006 budget appropriation from the General Liability Reserve Fund for said project. And Mr. Zeller has this, uh, for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight, we have a request to approve the lowest qualified bid. We did have informal bids, uh, and we did get a qualified low bid from a company named Nikon Incorporated. And as you said, it's for just a little shy of $132,000. And the second part of the request is also to approve budget appropriations since, um, the cost of the original roof replacement project was not enough to cover this cost for the, uh, the shoring and the bracing. So, uh, just to try to give you a little bit of background, this is quite simply a request to, um, uh, put, put up stabilization for the roofs, uh, west wall that will all, that will hold up the roof and also keep the west wall from, um, bowing out. It is, uh, it's a fairly simple and straightforward project. Um, it's, uh, the, um, as far as how it, um, how it interfaces with the building, the, um, the internal shoring to keep the roof up is actually running from the first floor to the second and holding up the roof, uh, or the floor of the second floor, which would be the ceiling of the first floor, and then going up to the rafter, so it's, uh, and that would be done by strut towers to carry the weight of the roof. And then there's also a concern that the west wall is bowing outward toward the parking lot. And so, uh, there needed to be a secondary, uh, lateral bracing project that was designed. And that interfaces with the building, um, in a way that's fairly minor. It, it's, uh, calls for drilling through the mortar of the bricks at three different elevations, eight feet on center. So, there would be 21, uh, holes in total. And basically, we pass half inch all thread through there and sandwich the wall in those areas. And then that lateral bracing goes outward to the, um, to the bracing that's on the outside of the building. And, um, we feel that this is a, a good bid. We had a company named DH Glaben Associates, who was a national firm, but they have a, a really capable office in Sacramento that did the work for us as far as the design work for both the shoring and for the bracing. And we were lucky enough to get, um, a very good contractor as our low bidder. Nikon has been, um, pretty active in historic restoration. They were, uh, they worked on the Napa Historical Courthouse, which was damaged, I believe, by an earthquake. Uh, so they did that work. Uh, they also worked on the Sac Memorial Auditorium, which is a pretty iconic downtown building. Uh, they did two buildings in Old Sacramento, and also the Amador Sawmill in Plymouth. Uh, so, they've come with very good, um, work and reputation and experience. And I can take questions on this, it's a fairly straightforward project. Uh, it's simply to keep the building from, uh, any kind of, um, catastrophic failing of the west wall, uh, which has been impacted by rain quite a bit from the, from the roof leaking. And it was determined that, uh, through burn engineering, that we needed to stabilize the building before any roofing project could come. So, that's the reason why we're doing the bracing and the shoring, and then looking to do a roofing project after this is complete. Um, I also have, uh, the city engineer and Pierre are also able to answer questions on some more of the technical or the code questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Colleagues, any questions for Terry at this moment? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Public comment is now open for item 12.1. We'll start with Ruth.
Good evening, Ruth.
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. You had a couple of questions. When this went out to bid, it was, uh, the engineer's estimate was at 85,000. So, I'm curious for an explanation of why it's greater than 50% more than the engineer's estimate. And I know the second bid came in at almost 100,000 over that engineer's estimate. I think the second bid was at 181,000, so that just brings up a little concern. My other questions, I have the, the packet, I have the drawings and specs, so I'd like to refer to those. Do you have those in front of you? So, you know what I'm referring to? Yes, okay. Um, under general notes on the second page, it says the adequacy of the existing structure or foundation was not reviewed and shall be reviewed by the contractor prior to construction. So, that's a concern, I wanted to make sure that the contractor had done that. And, um, going on to page S, it's the structural page, 3.0. When it says, "Public access shall not be permitted for the second floor level while shoring is in place." So, that's the entire time that shoring is in place, and it's unclear to me. Now, this is for the roof, so once the roof has been put up, are you saying that this shoring comes down? Uh, which doesn't really make sense to me. So, if, if it's staying up for the, until further work is done on the building, that means no access to the second floor, just wanted clarification of that. Let's see, a couple of other questions I had. Um, this is on sheet B 4.0. Uh, comment 3, "A significant amount of bricks are loose and in danger of separating from the wall. Contractor shall install plywood along the interior and exterior." And I'm just curious, once you do something like that, and you sandwich in a wall, then you have the potential of water being trapped within that area, rainwater, and I'm, and it could do further damage, and I'm wondering what kind of drainage, um, is being provided? Is my time almost up? I'm trying to go quickly. Um, I'm sorry, how much time? Uh, 4, 42. Okay. Uh, I happen to be also, someone else may be calling in on this. I'm not sure how I even received this, but there's a June 16th letter that was written to the Community Services Department, um, from the Historical Society, and I'm sure they can much better speak to this, I'm not part of that society. But one of their concerns was that this is on the National Register of Historic Places, and that, um, there was a concern that this work neglects the existence of architectural elements such as windows, et cetera. You have the letter, and I'm wondering if the whole city council has been able to review it. They were concerned about an environmental review and the standards being applied. They were worried about this building losing its, um, historic listing if this, if this work moved forward without adequately addressing these issues, and that a qualified historic engineer needed to be involved. So, you know, you may very well be getting a call from them as well. I was just curious if this June 16th, 2020 letter had been put in the record and if it had been reviewed and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, taking public comment from Sue.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening, I have to, I'm actually out of town and having bad, unstable connection, and I heard about half of what Ruth said, but I'm, I'm trying to, if you're going to hang on my time until I can get a better hook. And, um, can you hear me now? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, I asked if I can have five minutes for Friends of Historic Hometown and to catch my breath. I had to climb up three flights of stairs. So, anyway, um, okay. Um, so, I'm sorry, I sent in a letter about 1:30 in the morning, and, um, well, first I talked to Terry yesterday before we left on our trip, and I submitted something at 1:00, and then I added to it around noon. And I came back and found out that none of my emails were going through. You might end up with like 10 emails sometime, and so I finally had to give up, make a copy and send it on a different route outside of Comcast. So, um, I was hoping that you could get this sooner, but anyway, I'm really concerned about this building. The historic buildings are treated so much different than modern, um, construction. And, um, I know that the city started with the roof, um, restoration, and we laid out to them that the wall needed to be stabilized before the roof could be done. And we did a lot of work to try to get the, um, city to understand that. And then I was glad to see that you finally went to the engineer, and she said, yes, that's what needs to happen, which was actually in her recommendations from 2015. So, now, I'm looking at the plans, and I, um, was pretty upset because you're attaching, it's basically scrap, scaffolding on the outside and a wall on the inside. And I asked Terry about the wall, and I appreciate that his discussion with me was very nice. And, um, it's basically to make the area still, um, able to be used, and not necessarily, um, structural. But the, the issue is that the brick wall is being used to stabilize these walls that are being built. Your, your worst, um, part of the construction is the brick wall. It's literally turning to powder. And to put these elements on each side of the wall, and then, as Ruth was saying, you put plywood on that, it's going to make it even worse. The structural issue, if you fix the brick wall, you fix the structural issue, and then you can do the rest of the project. I've talked to the, um, brick mason that actually worked with Lori Burns to come up with some estimates, and asked him if he could, for this amount of money, um, I mean, it's up to the project's budget around 80,000, 180,000. If he could do this wall for less than 135. And he said, yes, he could. So, it's like, why don't you fix the wall, which is the structural issue, instead of doing all this makeshift stuff? Um, you know, this project you're approving now is mainly to hold up the roof so you could go roof it. You should have put tarps over it. I've got people that would be glad to come and install those for you to protect the building. Um, and tell, you've got to do this by the numbers. And when we put a, um, you know, I worked on a time schedule, and I gave it to the city that really puts everything by the numbers on how to do this right. If you don't do it right, you're going to end up with scaffolding on this building for the next 30 years. And I just, um, I think that would be really sad to move forward this way when you could spend, spend the money to fix the bricks. That is the structural integrity of the building. And I went. And I went through Lori Burns's, uh, recommendations and in option one, she actually recommends that is the best option. So.
Sue, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Well, I'd love to have a discussion about this because I, we do have the expertise. I'm surrounded by historic engineers and craftspeople. And I, I would be really, um, you know, I'm offering our, our volunteer work to help the city to, um, understand.
Sue, can you wrap up, please?
Um, well, lastly, I will say the disclaimer that the engineer said was pretty scary.
Can you move on to the next caller, please?
Wow. Okay, um, I don't see anybody else who has their hand raised. Okay, now I do. So let's, let's do call in user one, please.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Michael, Michael Drobish. So I'm all for saving Old City Hall. I mean, I have a petition out and about to do the same. So I'm glad to hear, uh, the staff report saying the bona fides of the potential contractor are based in historical preservation. Should have said that in the staff report, would have saved a lot of grief. Um, it'd be great for them to show off what they've done. Um, because there are certain things like when you have to drill, um, unreinforced brick, you cannot use vibration, you have to just straight up drill. It's real slow, takes a lot of time, it's more expensive. But when you use vibrating, try and like, some worker is just gonna get up there with a hammer drill and try blasting a hole through the brick to put in something. And you will break all the mortar joints in that entire area and weaken the wall even worse. So people need to know what they're doing. I have a lot of experience on restoring Main Street historic buildings. So the other, uh, I think it was Ruth had a lot of great questions, so you really should answer them. If plywood's gonna be applied to the outside, there needs to be an air gap. You can't just slap a bunch of plywood on that old school mortar. It could cause it to fail. So there needs to be an air gap at a minimum. So I think hopefully you can get, um, the engineer that you hired, uh, burn engineering to sign off on your plan. And that comes to this. I do not see any plans on this staff report, on this council agenda item that I can analyze. None whatsoever. The city put it out in their RFP with some rough plans. I know what those are, but usually a contractor comes back and says, this is a better way to do it, this is how we want to do it. And there's nothing for me to review. And so I just think, hopefully you're trying to get the roof on before this winter. I don't want to delay the project, but I really want to analyze the plans. So I don't know if Cleve can talk to me and, and, and just calm my fears that these people know what they're doing. But if they're gonna be punching holes in the building, anything on the inside needs to be marked and replaced exactly when the project is done. And if this is temporary just for the roof, why can't it be adjusted and made permanent? If you're gonna spend this amount of money on shoring, why can't it be permanent for the next 10 years or whatever it takes to restore the building? Don't waste money. So just some comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Now taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Evening, Kirk.
Yes, Terry Zeller is always does great work and I have confidence in him. And yet I would be leery of anyone who suggests that this is a simple and straightforward project. All of the comments you've received to date suggest otherwise. If these buildings were to fall down during the process of doing the work you're calling for, who would pay for it? What insurance policies do you have? Are these workers, is this company bonded to make sure that they're gonna pay the entire cost of restoration? Also, years ago, it was total, maybe eight years, the city operated under the advice that you don't need to follow SEQUA in the case of fixing up, uh, Cedar Ravine and, and Main Street and Clay Street with a roundabout. But you found out you did. And I think the suggestions that you would need to follow that in this case is certainly appropriate with historical treasures that you have here. I, I think that the letter from the Heritage Society is something that should have been made part of the record. Cause in essence, you have only one side. And that letter does detail a number of, of issues. There, however, are some people who had letters saying that they believed that the Hangman's Tree buildings had historic and cultural value when the city disagreed and didn't seem to like that opinion. And they haven't used the Heritage Society since as consultants on the project for the planning commission. While the county does use them. So those are the considerations that I think need to be looked at. Cause if this was your money and your property, would you do it in this way? When a lot of us are suggesting it's more on the haphazard side. Lastly, uh, all the people in the area who have expertise on historic preservation, it might be a couple of people who are thorns in your side, but at least they know what they're doing. And that's Tim and Sue Taylor, who worked with Mike Drobish, to do what everyone in the city said was not possible. The city approved a demolition permit because it said it was not possible. Not only that it had no historic value, but it was not possible to restore it. They did. So in conclusion, those are the things that I think need to thoughtfully be looked at, uh, before you consider this further. Just have that kind of engineering report checked off by, uh, the previous company that told you you had a wall that was crumbling. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Now taking public comment from Jennifer.
Yeah, hi. Um, I, I guess that, you know, I guess just to follow up on two, I think two points that have been made. One is regarding, you know, the call for proposals at a budget level that was so much less was, it seems like it probably discouraged, you know, some people in the first place. And then, you know, it seems like, you know, how can that be without going back out for bid? If, if you talked about such a smaller budget to begin with. So that's a problem. And then I guess this whole concept of bricks, which, you know, sounds like, it does sound like a much better plan. It sounds like it kind of goes to Kirk's point about alternatives. And then to hear that this was in somebody's recommendations, and I don't know too much about who they are and, and everything, uh, you know, and qualifications. But I mean, I, I'm assuming Sue's pointing you in a direction of an important professional recommendation. And it sounds like the bricks was the first recommendation. And so this gets into the whole concept of, you know, basic concept of planning. I mean, this SEQUA idea, it has to do with making good decisions. And, you know, it, it, you know, it just certainly raises a big question in my mind about why you're not going with brick, um, for this structure. If it's a, you know, if the goal is historic preservation, it sounds like that's a no brainer. And then it sounds like it's structurally the right thing to do as well. So I guess that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last call for item 12.1. I see no other, uh, public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back, uh, to the council for further discussion.
I have several questions.
Okay.
And maybe it's in the staff report. Terry, can you hear me okay?
I can. I'm good, Mark.
And our city engineer is standing by in the wings. Hi, city engineer. Can you hear me all right? Thank you. I'll assume Kirk can hear me. Um, whichever staff member would like to answer these, I'll go through two or three of these. Just for the benefit of the public, what is our anticipated timeframe for this shoring to remain in place?
Uh, that's, that's gonna depend upon, um, how quickly the renovation can take place. Uh, the idea behind this shoring and bracing is to provide support for the building, not only for the roof project, but to also allow things like the wall, the brick walls to be restored and things like that. So, um, it's, it's intended to stay up. And that was what the discussions were with the structural engineer. It's intended to stay up until the building is at a point where the unreinforced masonry wall that is failing can once again hold up the roof.
Okay. Now we've heard some concern about the, the proposed methods using plywood and then trapping moisture up against the brick, which of course is absolutely dangerous and damaging. Is there mitigations in the contractor's plans to deal with allowing, uh, moisture to drain away from the wall?
So. Go ahead.
Yeah, so if, Terry, if you want me to answer this one. So one of the items that, um, Lori Byrne identified in her report was essentially, um, the irregularities of the existing URM. And, you know, as Terry mentioned in his staff report, the wall's actually bowing out. And so not, uh, the assumption that the water would get trapped is assuming a perfectly plumb wall. This is anything but a perfectly plumb wall. That's why we have to do this shoring. Um, it's basically lost all lateral strength too. You know, the lateral strength comes from the floors and the roof level. That's where the lateral support comes in the structure. And because of these irregularities, that's, you know, we, we sandwiched the wall in, so to speak. Uh, it lends itself naturally to provide the air gaps that are needed. Um, and to kind of speak to Terry's point that, you know, let's be clear, this is a temporary measure. Um, you know, Lori did an excellent job in her report identifying the URM option and also identifying the $1 million price tag that came with it, which we don't have. Um, you know, but as we sit here and we could, you know, look at doing a fundraiser for this or some other method of funding this, we don't have a million dollars just sitting around. And certainly not during 2020 with everything going on with COVID. So I really do want to speak to, um, you know, this project was brought forward because staff and city and council do value these grid, these buildings. And we do value keeping them supported. Um, and this is a temporary method to do so. We need to, uh, stop the water intrusion through the roof leaks, which then affects the lateral bracing in the floors. There's quite a bit of water damage, um, on all levels of the floor, actually. Um, and so this is a, a method to do that. And then also there was a couple of engineering, uh, estimate questions too I'd like to address. One was regarding that it's 50% above the, um, engineer's estimate. Um, you know, we've sent this project out to bid in June. And I will say that we have been bearing witness to con- construction prices escalating substantially since the beginning of COVID. Contractors are busier than they have ever been. There's material shortages. Um, I mean, we're experiencing it on our CIP projects. I hear constantly from homeowners that, uh, contractors are in, uh, short supply and heavy demand. And so, you know, at this day and, uh, stage, that they're kind of allowed to set their prices a little bit, unfortunately. But that doesn't, uh, recuse the city from doing what it needs to do to protect these structures by putting in this temporary shoring and lateral bracing. Um, so that covered that. And then there was another question. Let's see, I think, oh, uh, one question regarding plans being posted on the website. Um, just to be clear, plans have actually been posted on the website since I think June. They're located on our RFP RFQ projects out to bid page. Uh, as projects go out to bid, they're right at the top. So it was right at the top for the entire time it was out to bid. And it, we keep projects and past proposals and construction projects on, uh, our RFP RFQ page for quite some time. The reason for that is we often get bidder questions post bid, so we don't just remove it. We keep it up there and, you know, we'll get, uh, you know, contractor V bids and things coming up saying, hey, do you have the bidders list? Do you have plans for this? We'll just direct them to this website. So I think that clarified all the questions I had unless there was something else we wanted to address.
Rebecca, I did have a couple more. Do you see any, any reason why we couldn't specify at this point, that we communicate with the bidder to make sure that they don't do anything to cause water to be trapped in the walls? And also the concern about using rotor drills is very legitimate. But I would also think that a restoration contractor that worked on the Napa courthouse after the earthquake damage, and I was there a couple of weeks after that earthquake. And there was a lot of brick buildings damaged. And it took them years to get them all squared away. Could you comment on those two? And then I have a soils question for you all.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, as far as specifying, uh, directly communicating with the bidder regarding not getting the water trapped in, uh, in between the wall and the paneling. Yeah, absolutely. Um, we work with our contractors all the time. If there's a better way to do it, um, absolutely. And, you know, regarding, uh, the use of rotor drills, we can communicate that with them as well. Um, one of the, uh, past experienced historic renovation and rehab, uh, projects that they have listed. So the city actually requested every, uh, uh, out of the bidders to provide an experience worksheet. One of the projects that our, um, low bid contractor actually worked on was the Sugar Mill in Clarksville, California. I don't know about you guys, but I've been to plenty of weddings there and lots of brick. And he did a great job working on that restoration as well. So, um, you know, as far as licensed contractors go, you know, as a public agency, we're required to hire licensed contractors and licensed engineers. Uh, we do, um, have a great contractor for this work. So, um, I know the price is a little steep and that's kind of the scenario we're in. But, you know, this is, we don't have a million dollars, but we do have what we need to support the building, to get the roof replaced to prevent further damage and decay to the building.
Okay, one last question or maybe no, but one for sure. My concern is that the contractor comes into town and discovers the lack of stable soil. It happens, it tends to permeate parts of downtown. Have you, uh, had a chance to discuss that with the bidders and the successful bidder? So that we don't start to put pressure on these scaffolds and then suddenly just find out that you're sinking into an old creek channel?
We did, actually. Um, that was something that was brought up during the pre-bid. I attended the pre-bid with Terry, just to kind of be his wingman. And, um, that was something that was actually discussed. We went down into the basement, we looked at the piles that are located down there. And we did discuss those as options. There is quite a bit of bedrock within the area of, uh, you know, the old historic alignment of the creek. So that part of it, I'm not too terribly concerned about. But if it does come up, we do have, uh, we did talk about a few options. We're gonna kind of cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I had a comment, I wanted to ask a question about the, the, we've heard several people claim that we're going to lose the historical designation if we do something wrong. And I don't know how staff, I'd like to hear from staff on that. It was also my understanding when we were, when we were looking at these buildings over a year ago, that the Historic, uh, Register of Historic Places is actually the lowest rating that you can get, if I'm remembering this right. Pretty much it's just a road sign and a, and a, you're on a map and it really doesn't do a half of a lot. Am I remembering the right historic designation?
That's.
Are you, is there any, is there any legitimacy to this concern about, uh?
Losing status.
Losing the.
Destroying the registry of the building.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Vice Mayor got the gap reading for me.
Yeah, so again, I want to go back to the intent of this, the, uh, the, um, lateral bracing and shoring is that it's temporary. Um, as Terry mentioned, we are doing half inch all thread holes, 21 holes in total within the mortar spacing, right? So we're not, we're not taking apart the wall, we're not deconstructing it. We're basically just holding it up temporarily. So once that, you know, we do go forward with a formal restoration project, that will just be removed. And so the integrity of the wall stays as it was before. We're not touching any architectural elements, we're not touching any of the facade. Um, we are just merely lending confidence a hand to stay vertically stable while we replace the roof.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can add to that also that, you know, it's been my intention with this. And we did talk about it with the engineers when we initiated this project, that, um, not only the, the roof, um, the, not only is this project important for just keeping the roof up, but, um, I know that, um, any detailed or, um, deep renovation of this building is going to require that those loads be taken off of the historic structure in order to get them up to code and up to, uh, being able to hold itself up again. And so that's why, um, there was a lot of care and discussion with, uh, both the shoring and the bracing to make sure that we were doing something that could stand there and be a great substitute for holding back those gravitational forces while a renovation took place and not worry about people's safety. There are a lot of cars that park on the. Um there are a lot of cars that park on the outside of that west wall. And um I know that um I experienced an earthquake a month and a half ago when I was up on the fourth floor of City Hall and that was probably the worst place to be in Eldorado County for that. So eh that, my first thought was to go check on that building. So I think that it's imperative that we move forward with um holding the building up. Um I did read the letter that came from the Historic Society and um I was looking, I, I couldn't understand what the concern was as far as destroying any um cultural or historic detail when we were trying to give it as light a touch as possible just to hold it up. I, I've always uh understood that this project is uh to maintain the integrity of those buildings because they have historic value to the community and the city.
Thank you. Um Councilmember Barelli, you had a.
You know what? And Regina answered my question as far as um, I, I was curious to know um about after, eh, how long? Okay, so how long is temporary? Um that was one question. And um my other question was eh with, we're going to remove the, like you just, you got through explaining, we're gonna remove the temporary bracing. Uh and if we come along and, and you're, you're saying, I mean, we know we need a new roof. Is that gonna affect, are, are we gonna have to remove portions of the roof too or, you know, what we? How much of this is gonna have to be redone when we put the, the uh, the permanent wall in?
Uh the bracing itself, is that what you're asking?
No, you're gonna remove the bracing. Eh that's, that's what I understood. You're gonna remove the bracing when you put the permanent wall in. Is that correct?
Well, the um, yeah, it's, it's gonna be repaired in place. So my understanding is that the, the main problem with the wall from an engineering perspective is that um the wall is separating from the, the second floor and the top floors, the trusses. Um it's actually going to, going westward. And um normally, when you have enough of your, of your um floor joists sitting on a ledge of the brick wall, what's happening is the wall is shifting and I think we've got about a half inch uh holding the walls or the floors and the roof up. And so that's why we want to arrest that issue. And of course, the, the constant rain doesn't do anything to help the uh structural integrity of the building either.
So we are going to put a, a new roof on it, right?
A new roof is part of the program that has always been discussed.
All right. So but so when you go to do the, the work again, when you go to, to put the permanent wall in, it's not gonna have anything to do with a new roof. I mean, it's not gonna destroy that work too.
No, um it's, yeah, the, the idea is that, you know, a roof would be a necessary next step to stop the water infiltration and then a detailed renovation has always been discussed with the Arts and Culture Eldorado Group.
And, and I understand that. I, I was just, I'm just kind of trying to calculate in my head future, you know, expenses and.
Right. So, so the basic steps were, uh the intention was roofing first. And then when discussing, discussing roofing, it became imperative to make sure the building was stable because if you start dropping heavy roofing up there and putting people up there, we want to make sure it's safe.
Absolutely. I, and I understand all that. I'm just, you know, was curious to know follow through.
So, yeah, I apologize. I was looking through Lori's report, just kind of reflecting on some of the um detailed uh items that she had spoke about in her three options here. One of them was uh, you know, fixing the R, URM, the unreinforced masonry wall as well as doing a timber retrofit and then a steel retrofit strategy. The timber retrofit basically creates and builds a, a timber building inside the building, right? And the steel retrofit does the same. Um in those uh options, it does discuss addressing um the roof and floor framing. And it also uh discussed that briefly in the URM as well. So the roofing project, my understanding is that it would um partially address the roof framing. Um but I would say that once we get the actual rehabilitation options designed and engineered, then at that point, it would be appropriate to just take one more look at it, just from a safety precaution standpoint. Um you know, there are the, the uh codes change often and so the seismic codes. And so um just having the adequate connections in place would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, there was a notion that uh, that we could uh re- uh repair the URM with this money instead of doing this shoring up and that should solve our problem eh with that wall. Is that a reality that's within the scope of, of the funding that we have available right now?
We're about nine hundred thousand dollars short.
Did I, how much did I get?
Nine hundred, almost a million. Call it a million. Yeah. So, you know, um back many moons ago in twenty fourteen when we, uh the city had proposed Measure I, which was a general sales tax measure. This was actually one of the identified projects was to look at doing renovations to Old City Hall and tragically that measure failed by nine votes, which would have been a really great funding source for some of our facilities that have repaired, you know, um it would have been great to have Old City Hall repaired and a new police station and a couple of other things, but.
And so here we are.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and thank you for, you know, one of the things that, that was important to me and I, I'm sure is important to our community is that we, we honored and respected the historic nature of this building, that we got qualified uh bidders that really understood what it meant to uh do work on buildings such as this. And I know that it costs more and that uh we're getting quality work, but I, I know you two have worked really hard on this to make sure that uh they were respecting those aspects of these buildings. And so I, I really do appreciate the effort you've put into this. It sounds like, you know, it sounds like you've done, you've done it right.
Yeah, thank you. And also I just wanted to mention too, because I think uh there's a lot of concern out there in the public about, you know, what kind of, um what kind of quality job is gonna be done. I think the contract we have, uh the work speaks uh for itself. And also on my own personal experience, before I came out to California, when I was working in Indiana, I did oversee a three and a half million dollar renovation of a hundred-year-old brick school building with a gymnasium and a theater. So I have some understanding of how project management uh for historic buildings works. And I know all the um ghastly complications that can come from even doing something as simple as um a bracing and shoring project. And that's why we felt it necessary to put some contingency funds in there also.
Thank you. And Councilmember Taylor.
All right, thank you. Um so just to kind of summarize and seek clarification on what I've been hearing. Um the reason that we are shoring up the walls with scaffolding instead of just fixing the brick wall is because there is a real safety concern with this wall and we don't have the money to fix the URM at this time. Um but that this is temporary scaffolding and the goal is to have that URM wall fixed eventually. Is that?
That's an accurate statement.
Okay. Um and then I had several other questions, but they pretty much were all asked by uh my colleagues. And I just, I, I just wanted to lastly recognize Sue Taylor's offer for volunteers um and recognize that we do have a lot of expertise in our community. Unfortunately, with a project like this, we have to go through the bid process and we can't use volunteers. But um I know that there are a lot of people in our community that really care about this building and really care about this project. And I just wanted to, to mention that. I recognize that and appreciate it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh just, I, I think most of my questions were answered as well. I, the only other thing I, I recall from comments here was a question about the second floor occupancy. I think it's, it's an unoccupied area now. So I just wanted to, to get clarification on that, that it would continue to be there until we had full renovation. Is that a?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Mayor. Um yeah, there's, there's really no reason why anybody would need to occupy the second floor of either the Confidence Building or the Immigrant Chain Building. Uh they're not really habitable right now. Uh the second floor is a little scary place to be. Uh so, yeah, I, I'm not concerned about that note in the engineer's uh project.
Okay, thank you. Cleve, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
Just uh the, the question came up too about whether or not we were following CEQA. Um we, we are, we are filing a notice of exemption. There is a clear exemption that even for historic buildings. I don't know if Pierre is on the line if he wants to add to that, I know we have, or Mr. Chris, was he in there too? Uh we researched this very, very thoroughly to make sure we were not doing anything in violation of that. And so we think there's a clear exemption for temporary shoring for safety purposes of historic buildings. So Pierre or John, you wanna add to that?
Um Terry, you wanna go ahead or?
Yes, I would add, I guess I would just add, and this is based on uh some of the comments that made by uh Councilmember Acuna earlier. Uh the building is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. And then one of the concerns was this project was going to uh run afoul of the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. So I think it's important to understand that this is not what I would consider rehabilitation. Again, it's my opinion, but I would think um uh the intent of those standards uh is to assist with the long-term preservation of the building's historical significance through the preservation of the historic materials and features of that building. And so per the notice to bidders uh that the city sent out, the project consists of interior shoring and exterior br- bracing to remain in place through a renovation process, not a rehabilitation process, until the exterior wall can be redesigned to handle the building's load and forces per, per code and also to allow for the safe application of a new roof. So since these stabilization measures are temporary and a future redesign of the exterior wall will be necessary for the long-term preservation of the building, uh staff is concluding that we are in compliance with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. And at the time that we look at doing the design phase of exterior wall and the permanent fix will be where we will look very closely for conformity with the Secretary of Interior standards.
And then the only thing I would add to that is that with respect to CEQA, uh there are exemptions in the guidelines. There's at least two that would apply to the uh projected work uh as well as the categorical exemptions. There's at least two of those and probably three that would apply. And I believe that what we see here uh would not um cause any of the exceptions to those categorical exemptions to be applicable. So there'd be no exceptions to those and we're well within uh CEQA law in what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Question for Pierre.
Yes. Pierre, this is a little off the subject. No, it really isn't either. What would a property owner have to do to list their property as on the National Historic Register?
They actually make an application. And so they submit a very detailed analysis of the building, uh photographs, its current condition and that it still maintains the integrity of being in a story building, hasn't gone through modifications, had all of its windows changed out, the siding all changed out. And so I think that's why this building qualified. It was the city that actually made the application to have it listed.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious why other buildings that have been restored haven't sought to be listed on the register. You know, their private rest, private restoration projects. I find that interesting. Thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
Okay, um there's a lot of discussion. Um.
I want to make just a couple of comments. I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the item and thank staff for their hard work.
And I will second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second and.
If I could just comment. As I was sitting here this evening, I'm going through this and I did get an opportunity to review quite a few of the plans and specifications and um appreciate the quality that has gone into selecting this contractor. This isn't just, you know, uh some brick restoration outfit. Uh these, these folks seem to know exactly what they're going to be getting into. And uh the various callers that were rightfully concerned, I understand the, the emotion involved somehow being convinced that government can't do anything right and we're going to somehow cause irreparable damage to these buildings. I think if we don't move forward uh this evening and this fall or just immediately, we will be causing damage. So hopefully there won't be any delays. But uh having been involved with the Taylor restoration from, from uh almost its beginning as a council member, two thousand twelve, I remember when I was mayor, uh the Taylors had purchased the property and began the restoration and were sure that we would never let them use um a plan check review that was sensitive to architectural situations such as their historic building, but which of course, we were certainly able to find uh engineers and architectural review and plan check that totally understood uh hundred-year-old, hundred-fifty-year-old materials and what they were attempting to do. So it seems as though uh we are beginning uh on the same path that they started on many years ago. Uh where the building was in two thousand twelve was inhabitable. Uh you know, off the top of my head, I can remember a number of years where it was shored up. Um it had fencing out in front of it. It had fencing on the sidewalk. And uh we went through it, the entire city watched an entire restoration project and it took several years. Um I remember when they had to get an encroachment permit to allow a crane to come in and install permanent steel bracing in the building. So um this building is no different than what they've been through. Uh so I could think that they would understand that, that uh we are about to embark on a multi-year process. Um sadly, it's probably going to be just as expensive as theirs was ultimately. I mean, the beautiful restoration that's there today down at uh, on the Taylor property, which is superbly done, um is held up by giant steel beams. And some sort of a fix down the road will hopefully help support our Old City Hall. So I would hope that the historic community would allow us to have the same, same time and uh opportunity to do this correctly. And if we don't stabilize this building, and it's struck me kind of odd that they, there did, there seemed to be some confusion over the need to get the load off of that wall. Wherever it's coming from, those, the loads have to come off. Yes, it does involve roof loads, floor loads, et cetera. And we need to do that first to stop the damage and then stop to reassess. Hopefully it'll be stable enough that we can put the roof on. Cause I, again, agreeing with the Taylors, there's, water is an old building's worst enemy. And we watched them go through quite a convoluted process to get the roof repaired on their building. So uh this isn't new. It's, and I'm surprised that uh there's such concern, but perhaps that's just a passion for the topic. I've made a motion to approve the item again. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. We have a second. Um do we have further comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Uh roll call vote, please.
And Mr. Goodson?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Hey.
Okay, thank you. That measure passes unanimously. Uh we'll move on to item twelve point two. Uh and that's adopted resolution approving construction contract change orders uh with Doug Veracop, General Engineering for a combined total of three hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents for the Upper Broadway Bike Lane, Schnell School Road to Point View Drive project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And our city engineer, Ms. Neves, has this for us tonight.
Vice Mayor and council members, before I begin, um I did want to make council aware that the original staff report actually included approval of change orders twelve. Um however, upon further review, we took another look at change order fourteen and determined, still a little early to bring that before council. It needs some fine tuning. So um I'd actually like to move that order for consideration this evening. You'll have, I have a request for change order twelve. Not to expect amount of hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred three dollars and twenty-five for the project. You may recall that on uh June twenty-third, council approved change orders one through nine that afforded a pretty substantial credit to the project in the amount of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars, while also concurrently approving, approving an amendment to properly document a cultural resource which was found as an inadvertent discovery in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for, uh for um a reduced usable credit in the amount of about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. As construction progressed, the project team, uh we'd go back and look at ways that we take that credit and roll it back into the job to add value. We're just projects, we create experiences, right? So when we add value into the job, we look to see what the community's experience would be. And two of the biggest needs still remain to do road rehabilitation and to support travel and the new bicycle facilities within that road. And also sidewalks provide new pedestrian facilities within the project. With the removal of retaining wall 3 through change order 9, it did provide an opportunity to include several of the aforementioned bike and pedestrian projects from about 1500 Broadway up to and through the Smith Flat Road intersection, which is a pretty heavily traveled portion of the project. These improvements enhance facilities for non-motorized and motorized users alike, as well as added safety items in that area. These improvements also include the Smith Flat Road intersection that's located within the state right-of-way as a city-owned road. And proposes, as I mentioned, the change order not to exceed the amount of about $294,103.25, which brings the total encumbrances to a revised amount of $6,451,962, which is still well within the project budget. Though, the city and the contractor actually received our encroachment permit from Caltrans today and we're looking forward to scheduling this work as quickly as possible. As mentioned, we did slightly amend the proposed resolution to state a resolution of the City Council, the City Plas- approving construction contract change order 12 with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering in a total not to exceed amount of $294,103.25 for the Upper Broadway Bike Lane, Schnell School Road to Point View Drive project, CIP number 41508. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions for staff at this moment? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for 12.2. I'm going to start with a couple of emails that were submitted to me. And the first one, the first comment is from Sue Rodman. And she says, "I applaud our engineering department for their creativity to adjust this project to conditions on the ground that resulted in cost savings and can now be put back into the project to add value and improve the project. It shows how lucky we are to have this engineering team with their commitment to make each and every project the best it can be for Plaserville." And the second comment is received from Mark, excuse me, Mark Treat. He says, "Fellow Americans, we are a young country compared to other countries. We have a young history as a country. Our ancestors were blessed when they came here because they were people already here. There were people already here willing to help them. The people who helped our ancestors, our natives to these lands..." Hang on, I'm just kind of reading ahead because for some reason, I don't think this relates to this item. I mean, it does, but I'm just making sure that I've got this right. Okay, so it just doesn't specifically say, but I'll just continue. "The people who helped our ancestors are natives of these lands. These natives have taken care of these lands for thousands of years and during that time, they gained an intimate knowledge of the lands. The ancient history of native sacred sites is only comparable to ancient wonders such as the pyramids of Giza. We simply do not know what we are destroying when we chip away at native sacred sites. We owe it to the generations who come after us to protect these native sacred sites so they too can learn about our own local ancient history." I apologize for that. That is definitely related to this item. And I will go to public comment now. Jennifer, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi. I just, I guess I did want to just say the idea that UC Davis is potentially, you know, willing to be involved in this, in this project is huge. And I just would really encourage the city to think about, you know, that opportunity represented by having, you know, that institution involved. They've obviously looked at the project area. I'm talking about the, you know, the archaeological, you know, whatever, study, you know, further excavation, you know, curation, whatever, whatever it is. But I just, I just think it's incredibly sad that it wouldn't be recognized, you know, that just having a relationship with UC Davis on this and many other things. That's, I guess, my main comment on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last call for public comment on item 12.2. Call-in user one, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Michael Drobish. So I drove up the other day up Broadway. Project looks really good. Just looking at the drainage, the cutback on the slope up towards the Highway 50 from the Taqueria down, I'm just wondering, I can imagine the next couple of years, there's going to be a pretty good mud flow across the street. Just looking at the cutback into the hill, a lot of it's rock. There's going to be a lot of dirt. The DI's, the drainage inlets, and the slope of the road towards the creek, just seems like there's going to be a good, you know, shedding of mud across the road. So hopefully there's a plan for that. Other than that, the wideness of the road looks like it's going to help the pedestrians that dangerous corner down there by Smith Flat Road. But with a nice wide road comes increased driver speeds. So hopefully there's, I don't know what the speed limit's going to be posted at or if you can narrow those roads because once those people find that beautiful new pavement and the, all that, it's going to be zip along with pedestrians still, you know, right up on the side of the road. And when it comes to the concrete reinforced retaining walls, those are graffiti magnets. So hopefully the city is going to go forward with the proposed stack rock retaining walls because it's really hard to graffiti those. And that's just the policy I'd like to see the city adopt is do not do flat concrete retaining walls that are graffiti magnets. Do something else. That's it. Bye.
Thank you, Michael.
I see no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to City Council.
I have a couple of questions for the city engineer.
Yes.
Rebecca, we're being asked to disapprove change order number 12 this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I guess this is just a general project question. Is there any part of the existing project criteria that's going to address the failed payment on Broadway up to Wilsey Road? From Schnell School to Wilsey Road?
Yes, that is actually one of the change orders that we're looking at and fine tuning right now. We're working with our contractor as an extension of, you know, doing either extension of units and we're working with our CM team to develop the change orders. As I mentioned, we did lose some of that, you know, credit that was realized in documenting the undocumented cultural resource. And so, but we do have some money left over that we're cautious, but you know, we're conservative, I guess is the right word. We're conservative with project funding, but we are absolutely looking at extending paving limits to Wilsey. I will say that the project does include repaving up to the Schnell School Road intersection. And so that's something we're very excited to implement. It ranks right up there with Spring Street with us emotionally, you know.
Oh yeah, that's, that's really bad. And that's why I'm hoping that we can stretch it out to get Wilsey because that is just a mess. And all our visitors.
Doing that, yeah.
Okay, very good. I have another question. Is, there is a continual reference to UC Davis reviewing the site?
Yes. So.
Can you give me a comparable? Is this like having the Smithsonian come out and look at it?
Well, so I.
UC Davis was known for its archaeology, but I thought they did animals and plants.
Yeah. So I do want to make a clarification on, I believe it was Jennifer Chapman's comments. The incorrect assumption was that the city had not included the UC Davis professors recommendation from the Apumnus Neeson Amewak. We actually did reach out to them. We did invite them to attend the site assessment work. We have extended that olive branch. We even scheduled around their schedules and they did not show up, unfortunately. We did have a tribal monitor from the state and federally recognized tribe, which is the Shingle Springs Bannamewak Indians. They were present. And as I mentioned, we did, we did extend that offer and they had accepted it. We were, you know, thinking they were going to come out either the first day or the third day. And it turns out they weren't coming out any days. And to their defense, you know, just with all the craziness of COVID in the world right now and schools and trying to set up for the next semester, you know, I mean, I can't even imagine what they're having to deal with on their own workload, on their own plates. And that was one of the reasons why we did reach out to them and tried to schedule around something that works for them just because we knew that they were kind of going through that. So I hope that, you know, for their schedules and everything, I hope everything's okay. But we did our due diligence on that as well.
But they're the recognized experts. Is that, they are a superior expert in this field?
Yeah, they're awesome. They're very thorough. We did have a very detailed conversation with them regarding the site. We did document it. And so, yeah, I mean, as far as that goes, we did consult with them.
Who's the Forest Service uses for archaeological work like that or Caltrans?
Well, Caltrans has their own in-house.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know who the Forest Service is.
I would think that's a constant issue with them.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm just trying, I'm seriously just trying to get some clarity on what's going on with this.
Yeah, and just to further clarification there, so, because the term UC Davis has been thrown around as well. This is a professor from UC Davis, not as if the UC Davis institution itself has taken a interest in this particular project. So it's not as if the chancellor sent City of Plaserville a letter.
Right. So we were referred to one particular professor and we absolutely reached out to that professor. And actually mutually, he reached out to our cultural team just through a relationship with a member on that team. And, you know, when we got that correspondence, we were like, great, this is awesome, you know. So we actually did coordinate with him and then under that professor's recommendation, we actually looped in an additional professor from UC Davis and included him on that phone call and consultation as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, seen none.
Oh, one thing too, actually, I do want to, I apologize, sorry. There was a comment, pedestrians, wider roads and higher speeds. I think Michael Drobish made that comment. He's right, yeah. So when you have a wider road, people tend to speed up. So we've actually put in a few things that narrowed down the lanes. I've mentioned this before, one of my favorite lane widths is 11 feet because it seems to be, you know, just enough to kind of get people where they need to go, but just cautious enough to where they have to pay attention and thus slow down driver psychology. There's also a few very, what's the right word I'm looking for? Discrete features that kind of create a little bit of a narrowing effect too. One of them is actually supering the road because, you know, when you're supered, you're tending to go into a turn which you speed up. But if you're not going into a turn and your road is supered, you're kind of uncomfortable, which means you slow down also. So, and then we actually did put in a pretty beefy curb to pull people off of the Caltrans crib wall. That's over the intersection at near Smith Flat. And also regarding rock and slope, we actually have already looked at, that's a great comment. We have actually already looked at knocking off some of the extra debris and basically doing a little water test to simulate any kind of first flush, any first big rainfall to kind of knock the loose stuff, which should actually help minimize any future erosion. And, you know, let's see, what was the other comments? I think that covered it. Oh, concrete retaining wall reinforced being graffiti magnets. We do have some treatment options on some of the retaining walls. I do notice that retaining wall 2 does not have a finish, but it's also not visible from the roadway. It's kind of down in a hole right at the culvert, just on the other side of the national line. So I do hear that comment and we'll look at that one as well.
Okay, Councilmember Barelli.
Rebecca, isn't there some kind of a spray that you can put, that they're using now to put on the walls that pretty much protect them in case there is graffiti? It's a lot easier to remove it.
Yeah, we, it's an anti-graffiti coating. It's pretty standard. I want to, I need to look at the actual standard plan because we're referencing standard plan D85 and I can't recall and I don't have my plans right here, right over there. But typically speaking, some of the Caltrans details do actually already call for an anti-graffiti coating. So I'll have to go back and verify it. My.
I wasn't sure that a lot of people know about that. You keep cutting out for some reason. We can't hear what you're saying. You keep cutting out. We're losing you.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to move that we approve a construction contract change order number 12.
Second? All right, we have a first and a second. Any further comments? Okay, seen none. Roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Mayor, can I get a repeat on who seconded?
It was Councilmember Acuna.
About three of us did.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and call roll. Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
And then Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, the item 12.3. Approving a contract with ERS Industrial Services in the amount of $266,440 for the replacement of the underdrain and filter media system of modular treatment unit number 2 and authorizing the city engineer to execute the same. And number two, approve a $275,000 budget appropriation from the Super Enterprise Fund on assigned fund balance for said project. And again, this is Ms. Neves.
Before you propose the new contract with ERS in the amount of $266,440 for the replacement of the underdrain filter media. You may recall that on your October 8, 2019 meeting, council did approve a contract with ERS for the servicing of modular treatment number 2 and pressure filter replacements. As the work commenced and the filter media was removed, it was discovered that the underdrain system was found in a considerable state of disrepair and in need of replacement. ERS did prepare a thorough evaluation of the underdrain condition, underdrain conditions, excuse me, and proposed replacing the existing laser plate system, which is actually typically used more for water treatment plants as opposed to a wastewater treatment plant. A little bit thicker material there. The city did look at a couple of proposals, requested a couple of proposals. We received one from ERS in the amount requested this evening for replacing an underdrain system that has a service life of about eight to 10 years and is more appropriate for a wastewater treatment application. And we also received a proposal from West Tech in the amount of $276,736. And it basically proposed replacing the existing laser plate system with another laser plate system, which again, isn't really appropriate for a wastewater application. And it also has a less service life. It has about a five-year service life as opposed to the eight to 10 years on the laser plates, or excuse me, on the underdrain system. I do want to compliment our WORF staff, you know, they continue to impress me with these, the way that they are able to maintain something that should only last five years and this one's working on 12. Like they really know how to maintain stuff. So I just, they're just awesome. They never cease to amaze me. So as such, this appropriate system replacement would be, you know, we'd be better served to go with the ERS contract and the budget appropriation of the Super Enterprise Fund for unassigned balance. Should this work be approved, it would begin immediately to allow also resuming of MTU number 2 servicing contract and the pressure filter replacement contracts. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Any questions at this point?
The funding for this, I think Dave is on the line there somewhere. The funding, how is this funded? It's, you know, what are we pulling, because, you know, our city's pretty short with funds right now. We have reserve funds, we have funds for economic uncertainty, we have, I could go on, but why don't you help us out?
Sure, great question. So, your Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is a separate set of books from your general fund, has its own reserve of approximately 1.4 million. And so you've adopted a continuing appropriation this year to get you through the first 90 days. Normally, we would have a $400,000 contingency, which we're going to recommend this coming September to you within your Sewer Enterprise Fund. But until then, what we're asking is that we go ahead and use unassigned fund balances, Ms. Neves indicated, of $275,000. And so that would come from your Sewer Enterprise Fund, unassigned fund balance or cash reserve of 1.4 million. Does that answer your question?
I think, yes. So we're not dipping into basically what we've called our general fund, or funds that we're using to run the city.
No, this is actually out of your Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is a separate set of books from your general fund.
All right. I wanted clarity on that, because, you know, when I first looked at this, I needed some, I was questioning, this is a big expense for the city for our sewer fund, and this is actually money that we have saved up to for issues just like this? Is that correct?
That's correct. So, in good years, when we have surplus, or we just don't spend down, you know, we have savings in certain areas, we basically roll it into your fund balance, which has grown a bit. So, that's paying off now so that we can do this project.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. And I think it's an important point to make for the public, to know that there's these different funds, and where the money comes from, and also that these are protected funds as well. In other words, you can't take the Sewer Enterprise Fund money and use it to pave, you know, Spring Street with. It's, they're not fungible. I mean, they're used for very specific things. And so just as another reminder, or just to underline it, is that there are different pots of money, but they're restricted funds. You can't just use them for any purpose within the city. So, thank you, Dave, as well, for the explainer, not just for us, but also for the city.
No, but that's true, because one of the callers tonight wanted us to stop paving roads, or, you know, and address the homeless issue. We can't. We just, they're restricted funds, and...
Right. Now, the state of California does this all the time, and borrows money from special funds in order to balance their budget. But we don't have the authority to do so.
You're not bitter at all.
No, not at all. I think there was over 10 years on some funds, back to the early 90s, when those were paid back. So, yeah, and we did it again in this budget, in order to balance a budget. So, no, we're not, we're not doing budget trickery here.
Right.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Public comment is now open for item 12.3. There's no further, or no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, Regina.
I'm going to approve all of the items.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further comments? All right, seen none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Okay, that measure passes unanimously. I know we've been going here strong. I'm just going to ask my colleague if they wanted to take a
I just want to stand up for a couple of minutes.
Five-minute break, and then return. So, with that, we'll take a five-minute break here. Thank you. All right, we are back. And Councilmember Taylor, we're sorry for going a little bit longer. We know you got a baby over there, but we were stretching a little bit longer over on our side, so sorry about that. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item 12.4. Consider approval of a plan from downtown merchants to close the area around the bell tower to allow for additional outdoor dining space to include live music on Sundays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and Saturdays through the end of September. And before we go to Mr. Zeller, Vice Mayor wants to make an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be recusing myself, as this is, this particular issue is within proximity of my business and would have some effect on it, and so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, we will wait for the Vice Mayor to go to the secret room in the bathroom. All right.
Why don't you just go to the back of the room?
All right, the Vice Mayor is in ticker chambers. All right, so we'll move on. Mr. Zeller has our report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, this agenda item is really just focusing on seeking approval of some outdoor dining space adjacent to the bell tower, and on the days that were listed in the staff report. I was approached, this came up fairly quickly, I was approached by Dana LeBlanc last week with a proposal for this dining space and live music around the bell tower, and it's to enhance the downtown experience. Dana had talked to me about, and talked to the city manager about providing some music under the bell tower at first, which he was given some approval for to just go for it. And then he came back later and approached my department with a proposal to expand on the bell tower music by barricading off the area. It's going to be, it's, there's a couple of plans that were provided in your staff report, that there's a Plan A and a Plan B. And both of them are basically trying to barricade off an area roughly equivalent to how the farmer's market, the Wednesday farmer's market is set up. And he was aware that the time that he was looking at from Wednesdays, on Wednesdays from 5:00 to 7:00, the seating itself wouldn't be able to be set up, because that's when the farmer's market's actually going. So, and he's aware of that. But, so we reviewed the proposal and determined that there are some restaurants in the area that could actually use the additional seating, his and a couple of others. And also, he was proactive in getting approval of all of those businesses along the north edge of that area, which is Midnight Kin, Pop Art, Powell's, Ben A, The Bike Shop, and Plasticable News. So they all are on board with this, as far as we know at the time of putting this together. So, there are some options for the council to consider. The first one would be to approve the Plan A to barricade from the bell tower to Pop Art, and that's the Attachment A. The next option would be the proposed Plan B to barricade the bell tower to Midnight Kin. So it's a slightly different setup. The big difference between them is the fact that the roadway coming out of the parking garage would be kept open on the Proposal B. And so there wouldn't be seating right in front of the sourdough area. That would still remain a vehicle lane for both left and right turns. And the council could also approve a modified plan or reject the plan outlined in the staff report. And it is worth mentioning that after this report was submitted, I had a chance to talk to Shawna Hartzell at the farmer's market, and she directed me to a specific governor's directive that doesn't allow there to be live music at farmer's markets. So, and the reason why is that they're attractive to crowding. So, any approval of this, finding out this information, any approval that would be given by the council, I would think would need to be contingent upon making sure that we're conforming with the governor's directive. It talks about farmer's markets, but we'll have to dig in a little bit more to find out if this use is nonconforming or not. And, yeah, so you've got your plans in front of you, and I can try to answer what questions I have. There's also the letter from Dana. I think it's pretty detailed, as far as what he's looking for. And he's also volunteering to be the go-to person to make sure that all of this continues to go off without a hitch, and that it's working. So I can take any questions.
Councilmember Barelli?
I don't understand what you, and maybe explain it again. How is it, how are they going to allow the farmer's market on Wednesday night and still have this?
It would just be the music under the bell tower.
Oh, so there's, okay, all right. So
Yeah, the farmer's market would be
So would be there.
Right.
And the farmer's market, they don't allow traffic. They, it would be Proposal A, right?
Yeah, I think it would just be, I think the best way to look at it is, on Wednesdays, it would just be the market plus some music at the bell tower. So there wouldn't be actually a plan in place for seating on those Wednesdays.
And I have one more question. Have you talked to Chief Wren about this, and how, what are his feelings?
No, I have not talked to him about it. But we can definitely ask him, for sure. I considered this as not really being much different than the farmer's market, so...
I think it's going to bring a lot of people. That's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And he's going to have a little bit more patrol duty, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, like I said, this
People are just itching to get out and do something. And I think, you know, especially if you have music down there, and then you're going to have people that are going to want to dance. And so, you know, I mean, and it's kind of hard to go up to somebody and say, no, you can't do that, sit down, you know. So I don't know how they're going to handle any of that, but one thing's going to lead to another. It's just the way it is. People, they hear music and they want to dance.
Yeah, well, that's valuable input. And like I said, this had come up kind of at the 11th hour, and that's why we wanted to get it in front of the council, because, you know, we've got a compressed timeframe with trying to make sure that the downtown stays alive, and everyone continues to be able to be part of the downtown community.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this moment? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for item 12.4. I'm going to start with a couple of emails that I received. The first one is from Sue Rodman. She writes, "I can support Option B, which leaves the exit from the, which leaves the exit from the parking garage open into Main Street. Option B is a balanced approach. With the Wednesday farmer's market closing, the option to go from the parking garage out to Main Street, I avoid going into downtown at all on Wednesday afternoons. Forcing people to exit onto US 50 from the parking garage on all four days, including the weekends, would reduce access to a large segment of downtown to customers." And then the second comment is from Pierce Rosello. He writes, "My name is Pierce Rosello. I am a part-time resident of Camino, having moved here five years ago from Hilo, Hawaii, where I still live part-time. I run a successful performing arts nonprofit, which I founded in 2006. Although I do not know all the ins and outs of the City of Platteville and business here, I do have a very good eye for what brings energy and enthusiasm to a place, which is how I successfully made my business in a town that is very similar in lots of ways to Platteville. I believe the partial closure of Platteville Main Street would be great for residents, tourists, restaurants, and businesses in our community. During these times, restaurants could use a few more tables outside than the current limitations provide due to third traffic. I have lived and traveled extensively in the world, and pedestrian-only zones are generally favored by people for the atmosphere that they provide. Most pedestrian shopping zones that I have been to are quite popular and heavily trafficked. The closed-off Main Street with music or other types of street performers may help Platteville grow as a tourist destination and meeting place for residents, not just a drive-through for people going to Apple Hill or Lake Tahoe. Now is the best time to try this, so that we can all safely enjoy food and entertainment outside where it is safer for all of us. Not only does this provide safety because of COVID, but allows diners to enjoy their meal without the exhaust and noise from cars and trucks. This plan also encourages walking more and driving less, which is another good point in favor of health. This is the future for most cities and towns. As I have read and seen, many cities are planning permanent pedestrian zones. There is really nothing more enjoyable than a good meal and a glass of wine and some music in the outdoors. I think it would be important to the town's economic survival in these times and thereafter." So, I'm going to open it up to public comment now. And we'll take the first one from TW Bonkers. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, guys. Hey, guys, good evening. Since I'm right across the street from all this stuff that's happening, I'm all for it. I love Dana. I love having another musician on the street that can play with me. That's pretty awesome. So, thank you guys so much for bringing this up. I think it's going to be really good. I will be more than happy to stay open during the evening. The only thing that I worry about is, right now, with the farmer's market, when you go down that, along the parking garage and behind all the buildings that are on Main, lots of vendors are not wearing masks at all, and lots of customers aren't. So I think we're going to have to really enforce the whole idea that if we're going to have a lot of people crowding together, having some fun, eating, we've got to enforce the safety aspect, too. Everybody in this whole wide county knows my COVID rules in my store, to sometimes a detriment, but more often to the positive. And we'll be more than happy to help you guys enforce all that. But I think we could find a happy medium and really do this. With regards to the options, I think Option A out to Highway 50 is actually the better choice, because I do believe once people park and do their thing, they want to go home, and it's an easy way out. So, that's it, and thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now taking public comment from caller 010.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi there.
You're on.
Yep, yep, thank you, thank you. This is Lisa Perdicisi on the Tribal A's on for the Wapoomasne Tribe, and I was on for the other call, and I didn't get called, even though the system said that I was in the queue. So I'm kind of upset about that. And then I tried it again on the next call, and I still was not called again. So, I'm glad you finally called me. The tribe is very upset about what happened on Upper Broadway, especially since that, all that study went on while the tribe was collecting signatures for the referendum. The city needs to address that. Also, the tribe requested to do a public meeting in front of the city council and present all their federal documents showing that they in fact are recorded by the federal government as a tribe and as Native Americans. And that is their sacred site. And you have been continuing to violate that sacred site. And you're basically putting the tribe in a position to have no choice but to sue you for damages. And I don't know why you guys keep doing that. We've been trying not to. That's where we're at right now. We will be going ahead with these initiatives and the referendums, and we're going to be asking a court order to go ahead with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And sorry we missed you earlier. I said, this is not a foolproof system right now, unfortunately. So, apologize for that, and that's why I allowed the comments during an off-topic. So, thank you.
Now taking public comment from Ruth.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So, just to start, I'm a little confused. I had thought this issue was going to be about what Cleve had given to all of us merchants that are a part of PDA, there's 35 of us, having to do a street closure. And I thought this was going to be reported on what we had said. It says, "Plan from downtown merchants", and that's more than just the five at the bell tower. So, maybe Cleve can tell us when he's going to report on what we submitted for that. You know, I agree with what the other callers have said in part. I've been very active on committees, trying to bring more vitality to the downtown. Much needed, much needed for, and I mean pre-COVID. and I mean pre-COVID, okay? I was, I've been on many committees to plan events to bring, bring locals and tourists to our town. But what I don't understand is, and I know this will not be popular, but why during COVID, when I really think the governor says, "Do not bring, bring big groups of people together", and also you just have to walk downtown to see the lack of compliance? We are a magnet for tourists from other areas to come here, to not wear masks, to not social distance. I mean, open your eyes and you see it all the time downtown. So why now would we say, hey, let's bring more of that? I mean, I, I listened to the board of supervisor meetings. Sue Novacel is crying for help for all of the people flocking to Tahoe. Eighty thousand over the Fourth of July weekend, no compliance. Why are we thinking of creating something? Okay, we're not like Tahoe, but on a much smaller scale, we're saying, hey, let's make an event to draw all these people in. We can't even manage what we have now. We don't even have any enforcement now. This is not helping. You know, they say, for the economy, first deal with the pandemic. If you deal with the pandemic, the economy will be fine. If you don't deal with the pandemic, this is going to go on forever. My store is still closed after five months, because there is no enforcement, and we will not deal with this. And so now you want to just bring even more crowds. And so whereas I really like the concept, I think the timing is really off, and I would wish you would think it through so that our numbers don't continue to go up from where they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Michael Druvich. So the governor shut down indoor dining in restaurants. The city responded brilliantly to allow, move the restaurants out onto the street. And then the restaurants decided to build tents and pack everyone on top of each other inside these tents with no mask enforcement whatsoever. It just seems illogical to me. I mean, I don't, really don't care about the COVID. I work, I come home. I don't sit on Main Street and per take of dining. But if you're trying to control a contagion, it seems like this proposal is trying to escalate it. I think there's almost no reason whatsoever, except on rare occasions, you should ever eliminate the exit of the parking garage at the bell tower to west and eastbound. You should really almost never do that, except in full street closure. I think the proposal here is very fascinating, that it's done by sourdough, which I think is under court order to not advertise its name as sourdough. And he's trying, he already has a massive sidewalk in front of his building for sidewalk dining, and he's trying to increase his dollar intake. So it seems kind of selfish to me, this proposal's coming from LeBlanc. I understand the music, and here's my thing. I'm trying to come home from the hard days at work. I've got a bunch of stuff on my truck. I just want to get home. And they shut down Main Street. Well, if anyone hasn't noticed, Highway 50 is a parking lot most of the days, because everyone's coming, going to Tahoe like it was 2017. So please don't just, if you're, if you're going to shut down Main Street and allow the outdoor dining outside, just be quiet about it. You know, locals, locals only. Stop, don't create a magnet, and stop interfering with me trying to get home. That's it. Bye.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Go ahead, Kirk. This proposal raised a lot of red flags as I listened to the presentation, because there seemed to be a lot of internal inconsistencies. But one thing, as I understood it, the farmers market doesn't have music right now, as they have in the past, because of COVID-19 restrictions not to attract crowds. And yet you're going to turn around and do it for this group. We already make an exception for closing off that portion of the street for farmers market. Okay, that's great. It's just the summer, and it works. But then you're going to do it for a longer period, and there's no end date. Also, as alluded to before, of all the properties on Main Street, I know of none that has gotten more advantages from the city than this. When you made street changes in accordance with the streetscape plan of 2007, you expanded the sidewalk area for outside dining in front of that business. And then they were granted the permission to have, from the planning commission, an awning. And then recently, as, have other businesses put out outside dining area on the Main Street side. Oh, and that happens to be right next to a bollard that's been knocked off how many times? Also, you had proposed, when this came up before about outside dining, that the staff would come up with engineering issues for a plan, and then each business could be able to adopt it. That way you'd make sure that you had ADA compliance issue and other zoning issues taken care of. Well, I'm, I'm glad you put that aside. I'm glad you sped it up, because those businesses needed. But I went through, before this was on the agenda, and looked periodically to see which businesses were faring well under this plan for outside dining. Bricks seem to be packed most of the time during lunch and in the evening. But of all, but one of the lowest turnouts was that sandwich shop. I saw one couple there on one day that was over where the side is, and rarely see anyone on the street side. They have enough space. If they want to bring in music, they've got sidewalk space, do it. You know, are you talking about a live band or, or a PA system? But you've got space already. This isn't just greedy, this is main pigish, to get so much concessions from the city. I want to thank you, Mayor, for meeting with me after I had all kinds of promises for two years to work on one project. Two years. This gets on the calendar in one week. There's just a lot of red flags. Oh, oh. And then we have Apple Hill time coming up soon. And that's where we're concerned about traffic. And then you're going to have more traffic going out that way for people who live in town in many cases, and then they're going to turn up Highway 50. You also have a problem about safety when it comes to fire. If you close off a street, what's going to happen if a fire truck has to come in? And that's happened, you know, once every few years here. If that happens, what's going to happen? They plow through a bunch of businesses and setups. It's just, doesn't look like it got thought out well in this one week. I hope you give it more consideration as in put it off a week. You know, or consider doing it, hey, up the street in front of bricks, or down at the other places. But don't do it for people who already have substantial advantages provided by the city. It's not going to go well when, as Ruth pointed out, the members of PDA weren't consulted. Not that they get paid much attention to anyway, but just at least go through those formalities. This has lots of problems. It doesn't look like you've thought through. I'm all in favor of promoting business and love a party, but this is just.
Kirk, could you wrap up comments, please? Kirk, we lose you?
Last call for item 12.4. No more comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, we will bring it back to the council for further discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
For staff. Appreciate the callers calling in. Very, very good observations. The, the one that has stuck out to me was Enchanted Forest. I noticed that most all the other restaurants took and, and built their, their outdoor dining areas pretty much in compliance with the area that was in front of their, their restaurant. Enchanted Forest seems to have like three parking stalls. And then there's a stall, and then another, and there's a green zone. Was, is that in compliance with what we had set out a few weeks ago? And I know Pierre has worked hard, and our city engineer, Ms. Nees has worked on it. And as, as one of the callers pointed out, those little confined areas don't, wouldn't seem to me like they would be in the spirit of the governor's directions to, to outdoor dining. And then you built this really tightly enclosed area for your dining, for your patrons to sit in. So I guess, basic question is, is it, why is one restaurant entitled to three or four parking places versus the others that seem to be just in compliance with their own storefrontages?
Pierre, did you want to address that, or I can't either way?
Sure. They are in compliance. Essentially, they're occupying the parking spaces directly in front of their restaurant. And then they have an additional parking space in front of an adjoining business that is currently closed. They take appointments only. That's the body basics.
Yeah, they, they also, because they all. Vibes up. Yeah, they own, thank you. They own where the restaurant is, plus the next to it is Vibes Up, so they have that business. So we allowed them to go there, and then they asked to expand a little bit more in order to get the seating that they thought they needed to have. And so we did allow that, so.
Oh, okay.
They, they were actually larger than they are now, and we, we cut that back from what they were. They expanded in front of, to the east, and we pulled them back from that.
I don't, I didn't understand your explanation.
So they, they are in front of their restaurant.
Yes.
Plus they're in front of Vibes Up, which they also own that building.
Oh.
So they own, they own.
But that's not a restaurant. I thought, I thought you granted this just for restaurants.
Well, we, we did. But again, we're trying to be flexible if we can with this, to allow them. As not, as long as we do not, we feel that it's interfering with another business, we're allowing that to go on. And since they own that other business that it's in front of, we felt that that was legitimate, and gave them a, a few more tables that they can have outside the restaurant.
It just looks odd.
Yeah, and again, I, I would say that we did, Pierre did work with them, and we did cut them back from what they wanted to have, what they originally had, so.
I'm just, you know, we've, and I.
It's like you give an inch and they take a foot, you know? I mean, it just, it doesn't sit right. And I can understand why some places are probably a little niffed about it. It, it just, I don't know. To me, it's not right, but.
Well, again, we just work with them to try to help them.
I get it.
You know, do, do what they.
I get it.
Try to stay open down the street.
There's a lot of other places trying to stay open too.
Right.
They didn't take too, you know, expand all the way down the street.
Yeah, they've been, they've been pretty good about staying in their restaurant storefronts. I appreciate the clarification on that, so thank you, Cleve. Thank you, staff. I, I guess my comment would be, I, I prefer proposal B, which keeps the exit from the garage open, for a couple of different reasons. Safety's a big one. Every year when the farmers market, the Wednesday farmers market starts up, I always get a few complaints about that, and the difficulty getting in and out of the garage, and.
Well, for that, do we approve even doing this? Shouldn't we decide whether we approve before we talk about?
Well, that's kind of where I was going.
Oh, okay, because I, I, okay.
Yeah. So, you know, I would, I could, I could see merit in that. And the callers have brought up some interesting points too, about we're adding some attraction with having the music at the bell tower. And so it goes beyond just the, the support that we've, we've, you know, allowing all the restaurants to spill onto the street. And this is, anybody that doubts the importance of this doesn't understand the importance of the employment opportunities and revenue that's generated out of the restaurants, and all the hard work and dedication that's gone into making them. A really nice eclectic mix of dining choices down there. And that's not an easy thing to accomplish. So I think it is important for us to do what we can to protect and encourage it. I don't recall us ever allowing, and I'm like, 385 Main Street, which was the old Centros, which was the old bakery when Patty was in town before, right? That sidewalk's always been that big.
It has.
And there was a plan a few years ago that the owner of Centros withdrew. He was, he had started an encroachment process to take some extra space out there.
Outdoor dining.
Yes, he did.
And he pulled it back. So Mr. Smith, I don't, I think he's probably remembering that that, there was some talk of that, but.
He was going to pay for the whole thing.
He was going to pay for it. So I'm hoping the city engineer is in concurrence with my memory.
If I may add, that sidewalk was actually widened as part of the Main Street Rehabilitation Phase 2 project that was completed in.
I apologize.
And it, part of it had to do with realigning that turn lane and making room for the bollards and.
Please credit, because he's the one that came up with the idea that's now protected the bollard, knock on wood. He, he moved one of our old planters there and got it adopted. And so it's not only a beautiful spot, but the bollard doesn't get hit anymore, because all our vehicles can see.
Yeah, but it's a heck of a corner to try to get around.
Traffic calming, right, Rebecca? That's traffic calming. So, you know, I can certainly see supporting, again, option B, keeping the options for the local, us local folks that are coming and going, the Michael Druviches that have got their load of lumber and they're tired and need to get home. They need to be able to come out of the garage and turn left or right. Gives us, and it puts the area over with the other restaurants that have been struggling with their street frontage. I know out in front of Menet, Menet Hayes, it's, they've got their couple of little seats, but there's not a lot of room there, so.
Mayor and Council, could I make just one more comment?
Yes.
I wanted to address the one thing that Mr. Zeller said, for you to include in your discussions, and that is the fact about the, whether or not we allow the music. Though that farmers markets are not allowed to have music by the, part of the governor's order. And unfortunately, we got this information after we had written this report. But I want to stress that, that I, I do have some concerns after reading that with us allowing the music. So it's totally up to you, my, my thing.
Well, that isn't, and that isn't my, my concern was just having music. Because I think it adds to the festive feel, and I, I agree with, I can't remember which caller said, that we're just inviting, we're, we're inviting more people to come into town. And, you know, it is, it is going against all the things that are out there about this COVID thing. You know, here we are, a meeting like this, we can't, you know, we can't have public meetings. And even if we had people sitting six feet apart, and yet we're going to allow something like this, you can't eat with a mask on. I mean, so they're, people are going to be down there without masks on. And I, I don't, I just, I, I think it's a great idea, but not for this particular time. I, I really, I think we're just going against everything that you hear about all the time, and all the, the doctors are warning, and, you know, don't, don't congregate. Don't congregate.
Would you support plan B?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm supporting the whole thing.
Minus music.
I, I'm just not really sure, because I think this favors maybe those few restaurants right there. And what about all the rest of the restaurants on Main Street? You know, they're limited to the little bit they can have in front of their restaurant. I, I just, unless we're going to establish a place that maybe say all the folks up here can, you know, will open up another patio area for them. I, I just, I, I don't, I, I, and I sound like Debbie Downer, but I, I, I'm just trying to look at this illogically. Though I'm not sure that, because I don't think that the restaurants are. Um, though I'm not sure that, um, I, I, 'cause I don't think that the restaurants are on, on this end of town are gonna wanna send their patrons down to sit in this area.
No, no, no.
And so, um, you know, this, and I, I'm thinking that this area is gonna look more, you know, uh, people are gonna wanna go there and then is that gonna take away from the folks that are up here trying to make a buck too?
I'm, is, uh, is Chief Rand on the line? Is that straightening up his chief's tie and come back? Here he is. But you're, yes, good evening again, chief.
Hello.
Um, chief, I know, uh, during this, during the summer, uh, during some more controversial times, uh, Public House, um, first of all, do you, have you had an opportunity to review this disclosure? The idea of the music and, and your concerns with, uh, the alcohol in the street and being able to control that?
Uh, you know, this, no, I haven't talked in depth with Terry about this. I'm, I was just reviewing the, uh, the information contained in, in our packet. Um, you know, a- anything related to alcohol, we, we always have a concern. Some people take it too time, take a good time a little too far. Um, so we want to evaluate whether or not extra law enforcement staffing would be required to make the event a safe event. Um, the street closures, you know, those, though, we do those quite a bit, we, we've gotten good at them. Um, a, a lot of this, um, these things being discussed, uh, you know, sometimes it just requires us to, to, you know, roll with the punches as, as the event unfolds. Within a, with a new event, and I did this when I first started up here, um, as a commander, uh, any new event downtown that required any kind of closure, I, I came out and staffed it and evaluated it, um, from start to finish to determine if there was any adjustments needed as far as a law enforcement response was concerned.
Okay, thank you. I'm just concerned about the camaraderie, if you will, between watering holes, I'll put it that way.
People are gonna get together, yeah, they, they.
Going out into the street and then the street's gonna be closed around the bell tower, so now you're out at the bell tower and.
We, we've had those, yeah, we've had those issues recently, um, we've spoken to some businesses about it and they've been responsive to our, our concerns and our requests. Uh, but it's just, it's, it's the social gathering aspect when people get together and, and, uh, want to have a couple, couple of things to drink. They, they tend to.
That's what happens.
We're all very frustrated right now.
Like cat, cattle at a watering hole.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, it is.
That's a nice western reference.
That's a good analogy.
Watering hole. Uh, council member Taylor.
So I've been really torn about this item because on the one hand, um, I absolutely want to support any creative ideas that any businesses have downtown to get through this tough time. Um, and I really liked the idea of outdoor music. Our local musicians are really struggling. They're not mentioned very often because they don't have a, a shop, but, um, they definitely need venues. And I drove by on Sunday and there was music playing in the bell tower and I thought how nice it was, um, and how nice it made that atmosphere. But on the other hand, um, it just really does kind of seem like an unfair gift of city property to a small number of businesses when they're all struggling on Main Street. Um, and I feel like if we approved this, we would need to really basically approve anything that any other business came up with, um, further down on Main Street to keep things fair. I, I think I'd rather see, if we wanted to do something like this, a larger Main Street closure that benefited more businesses and was a little bit, uh, fairer. Um, I don't know, I'm, I'm still really torn about this. I would, I would have loved to hear more feedback from the businesses downtown, especially the ones that weren't right around the bell tower to see how they feel about this. I, I think that if we did go ahead with approving this, um, and, you know, even at this moment, I'm not quite sure where I'm gonna fall on it. But I think that we would need to, um, you know, put a clause in there that we would reevaluate if we had a lot of complaints from other businesses or, you know, kind of take it day by day instead of giving it a full closure through September. Or if there were problems with people not wearing masks or, you know, crowds gathering or anything like that. But I also share that concern with, um, crowds gathering when clearly we are not supposed to be encouraging that right now, so. Um, those are my thoughts and I'm still kind of mulling over what side I'm gonna stand on this, so.
Kara, can I ask, do you feel like the music is a, is a stretch and is more of an attractive nuisance? This, with the COVID regulations that we're supposed to be following? Are, are we creating a magnet if we were to allow music?
I think we would be. Music would be really nice. Like I said, I drove by on Sunday and someone was playing there and, you know, it made me happy to see that and I thought how nice it must be sitting outside at the Public House listening to that right now. Um, but, you know, going into Apple Hill season, when a lot of other towns are closed, um, especially if we close the street really close to the bell tower so people can gather there, I think that we are going to get crowds there. And I think that is gonna pull business away from restaurants that are further down the street. Um, because it will clearly be a more festive, vibrant atmosphere, um, which just, you know, is, it just seems kind of unfair, especially since we're not charging anything from, you know, the city's not charging for this and, um, it just, it, it just seems like preferential treatment to a handful of businesses.
What if we just went along with, um, the original when the, uh, I guess, Cleve, you said you gave permission to have li, uh, music at the bell tower? What if we just continued music at the bell tower and didn't allow this, this new proposal?
Yeah, I, sorry, I, I don't know what Terry's thoughts are on that, but based on this issue of not allowing it at, for farmer's markets, basically, uh, we had an event actually that was requested, uh, as a fundraiser where they wanted to do a, uh, live music at the park where the fundraisers would, uh, they would actually get their mail from one of our restaurants and then go over to City Park and listen to live music. And we ended up, after consulting with the county, we turned that down, uh, because of the live music, they, they recommend.
I just think anything like that.
So I think, although I understand the live music, I would love to see it too, but I can't, I, I, I'm out of it.
You are Debbie Downer.
I know, but music just invites crowds and this is when we're, we're constantly.
I mean, there's so much pent up demand right now too, that it's.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think people are looking for any outlet right now to, to go out.
They are.
I mean, I, I, I know this came to us quickly.
Right.
And I, I just don't, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable that it's, it's a baked idea to go forward with at this point. I have serious concerns about the music and an attractive nuisance, um, and the ability to, to show that it's, it was fair to all of our Main Street patrons. The one thing I will say, because, uh, I know Powell's has, now has an outdoor area that they're using.
An oyster bar.
Uh, yes, and then they also have their, their, their back, their oyster, yes, and now they have their, and they have their back area as well.
Exactly.
Uh, the only person I, Benny doesn't have an out, a, in front of their, outside of their little area, correct? I mean, I, I'd be comfortable with staff going back and trying to work with Bennet to figure out a way to get them more, uh, yeah, sidewalk space to, 'cause they're, they are the only ones here that really benef, I mean, Powell's would obviously benefit from even more space, but, I mean, they're.
Well, can't Bennet put a place, a, a little, uh?
Yeah, the only thing I know is that they're, I don't know if they're in conflict with the Wednesday farmer's market to have a, a structure, um.
Uh, they, they, they would be, I know that Powell's was actually also, and we worked with the farmer's market, uh, promoter and she made arrangements for that to work. Actually, however, what that did is that ended up pushing things a little bit farther down Stacyo Talia, which also raises a concern. So, uh, that would maybe need to happen again if we allowed another one to go out there. So there's kind of a little bit of a conflict there because of the farmer's market, so.
Well, you know, Cleve, maybe it's just, um, because of the times and I know we have a contract with the farmer's market, but maybe they're gonna have to give a little bit too.
Mm-huh.
You know, I mean, everybody's sacrificing.
Nobody saw this coming.
And, we, no, no, and I, it just, you know, uh, so.
That's a good point, Patty.
But what would it hurt them to allow one more place, you know?
Well, I, I'm not saying they wouldn't have.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand.
Unless they cooperate very well with the song.
Right, and they might have to just cooperate a little bit more.
And maybe that's where this idea leads us, is we, we, we do, uh, some work to get a Bennet's spot out there, making the, working with the farmer's market.
Because I think every other restaurant has a place out in the street.
Right, I mean, they're the only ones here that don't, that does not have one, 'cause I mean.
Right.
Sour Dough, this, you know, the.
Right.
He has all the space front and then, and then down the side.
And then he has one out in the street.
Right.
You know, so he's got lots of, uh, so I don't think he's doing this just for his own self. I disagree with the caller that said, you know, he was doing, I, I, I disagree. I think he thought this would, and it is, it's a great idea, but I just.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. LeBlanc likes music, I mean, 'cause the, he wanted to have proposed, proposal B if, if it was just about himself
Exactly.
because that cuts off any, uh, extra, extra room for him.
Right, yeah. But I, I just don't think now's the time to have this, I'm sorry.
Quick question for Cleve.
Yes.
Cleve, uh, it, we heard from, I think it was, uh, Ruth regarding PDA, um, what is their current status? Earlier this year, they had kind of disbanded them. Because she said, well, the known on PDA knew about this.
Well, let me, let me just talk about what she was commenting on. Um, I did get approached by two people that are still, uh, supposedly in leadership of PDA, asking me to do, asking me to consider closing Main Street for certain events. What I did is I put together a survey, uh, that I put out through PDA to their members, plus we just tried, we tried to distribute it to others that were probably not a member of PDA, uh, to try and get their input, see what they would say. Um, unfortunately, it went out pretty broadly, but I've only received about five of those back at this time. So it's not enough, I don't think, to really form an opinion. Ruth, who made that comment, was one of those that has turned one in. Um, and there's been a few others, but, but very few and not enough to really say that I could say one way or the other what to do with it. So I, I haven't put forward anything there, so.
Okay, thank you. Wow, that's a nice one for two.
And I, and I, I think Kara is right too, that there's so many places around us, you know, uh, that have, um, they're closing, you know, and I, I do think that this would just be a magnet for pulling people in, um.
And we are, and we're in the Apple Hill season, not out of it, so.
Exactly, and that's gonna add to it.
So if, if the, if the council's okay with it, I'd make the suggestion that we, uh, have staff work with, uh, Bennet and, and our Farmers Mark Wednesday's Farmer's Market to maybe come up with an accommodation, uh, so that we can get Bennet some outdoor seating. Um, and, um, until that, everybody in this area would have some, some outdoor seating and then probably just ta, table this idea, um.
And, and I'm. Yeah, and I'm not against, uh, out, you know, having music. I, I, I agree with Kara. I think the type of music though that's chosen is pretty, they're gonna have to watch that too, you know, but, um, e- especially with people sitting outside, they don't wanna be drowned out with, you know, rock and roll, probably.
For sure.
That wouldn't be, anyway, I agree with Michael, so, uh, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, but I guess it's not really a motion, it's just sort of direction, yeah.
No, it's just.
Well, that's. Yeah, my, my only, um, addition to it too is just to go back to the caveat of, uh, we put this together, uh, pretty quickly. Just wanted to make sure that we were giving, um, our downtown folks some, uh, some, some quick, um, council direction on, or at least discuss the ideas to open a little bit of a forum. But, you know, there is the governor's directive that I feel we have to really, um, see if we are, uh, in compliance with that also as far as the music goes in general.
And I hope the downtown people understand, I am not against them or anything, you know, that they can come up with, but I just think this is going a little bit too far and going against, you know, like you just said, the governor's, you know, um, what they've been telling us and what all the physicians are telling us and, you know, th- this just doesn't, um, comply with that.
Absolutely, and I commend staff as well as Mr. LeBlanc for bringing the idea forward. Uh, it did, it did highlight the fact that the Bennet is at a disadvantage right now.
Yeah.
And so I, I think out of that conversation, hopefully we can still help one of our, uh, uh, restaurants downtown, so.
Exactly.
Okay. You know, we're being consistent too because we are pretty much limiting, limiting it to the properties directly in front of where the deal is.
In front of it, right.
Correct.
So, um.
Do you want a motion?
Do you want a motion to?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to not approve the staff's recommendation and direct staff to work with the, uh, farmer's market and Bennet to allow Bennet to install, uh, additional outdoor seating in the parking, in their parking space.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Casey, none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
And, you know, I'd like to state that I think it was a great idea and, and we just upon thorough review have identified where we aren't going to be in compliance with the regulations that are out there right now.
Just wrong, the timing is wrong.
Yeah. Timing is wrong and we, and we need to be, also be fair with the use of the, the city's street case.
Right.
Yep. All right, well, good, uh, discussion there, everybody, and thank you, staff, uh, as well on this one. And we can bring, yes, the vice mayor back, back out. That's your top man.
All right.
Back in the game.
Back in the game. All right, so, uh, we're gonna move on to item twelve point five, um, that's authorize staff to pursue traffic measures uh, to alleviate congestion on local streets and roads during Apple Hill season and return on the August twenty-fifth meeting with recommendations. And, uh, Ms. Neves has this for us this evening.
Good evening, um, Apple Hill traffic, as you know, has long impacted our local road network, especially during the peak in the fall for several years now. Staff has worked with Caltrans consistently as well as the county and the Transportation Commission to adjust signal timing on Highway fifty in order to help alleviate some of the resulting congestion that's occurring on Highway fifty that then spills onto our local roads. Signal timing, uh, as that measure has now become fully exhausted and, and unless they do physical facility improvements on Highway fifty, um, we're at a, at an impasse on that. However, in twenty seventeen, Caltrans did initiate the US fifty highway, uh, Highway fifty hotspot study to evaluate congestion issues within the entire county up to the Tahoe Basin on Highway fifty. And among one of the hotspots was the signalized segments of Highway fifty through Placerville. Executive Director Woodrow Deloria from the Elrod County Transportation Commission provided permission last week regarding the status of that study and it's attached as part of staff's report. Um, we've also received a schedule for the hotspot study and those two items I'd actually like to, uh, just for a moment briefly touch on. Um, specifically on, uh, Executive Director Deloria's update. He discusses, you know, Caltrans has actually provided us some very initial planning level cost us for some options that we're looking at within the Highway fifty hotspot study. And, uh, AIM is, uh, our P, our public outreach consultant that, uh, we've, um, received a grant for and hired specifically for spot segment that's in Placerville and they're actually developing a virtual stakeholder meeting, public outreach video and a community, uh, virtual community workshop, uh, going out in September. So, um, furthermore, EDC TC was also successful in securing some additional grant funding to support, uh, the US fifty corridor system user analysis or investment strategy and access control action plan. It's a long fancy term, but basically what that is, is we've had the, we've talked about this before under, uh, basically it's serving as an action plan for the pilot project, uh, in Placerville, which would be tripping the signals through Placerville to Green for extended periods of time to allow essentially flush, um, congestion traffic that has generated from either recreation use or through, um, Apple Hill, uh, additional traffic. Though, um, with that, uh, staff is actually seeking direction from council this evening to develop some options. Um, we're gonna go and, uh, come up with some options to reduce some traffic impacts on local roads during Apple Hill season in, in light of all this information. And we would consider bringing it back to council as part of our recommendations, uh, on August twenty-fifth, the next meeting. Uh, that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Uh, that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Neves. Any questions for, uh, Ms. Neves at this moment? Okay, uh, seen none. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up public comments. And again, uh, staff's gonna be coming. Oh, go ahead, Regina.
No, after you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna open it up to public comment.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just gonna say, just to, to preface all this, is that we're gonna be, they're gonna be coming back with specific recommendations, so, um, you know, let's, let's also take that into account as, as we give, uh, comments here.
So, we're, they're not asking for a recommendation from us tonight.
Tonight, no, we're just, uh.
Why are we talking?
We're not talking about solutions. We're, we're talking about asking, does the council want to ask the staff?
To bring back, yes, wh- whether we want them to bring back.
For this season, right?
Correct.
You're dealing with trying to deal with the, the, the next few weeks.
Right.
Right, and if we, because as we've talked about on, on earlier things.
Because.
I, I, I get it, I get all that, but I, 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 it's too, uh, you know, what, one of the things that we all seem to, I thought, were kind of in agreement with the, putting the lights on green, and that can't be done now.
Right, that's not till next year.
It's not gonna be allowed, so.
Right. Right, so these are just, basically, temp.
These are temporary.
What else can we suggest?
On Jesus.
Yeah.
Close it down.
Yeah.
Close Highway fifty down.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, but, yeah, I just wanted to give that context, uh, to, to the public, is that we're gonna have more speci- more specificity going forward.
Right.
Uh, so go, go ahead, Regina, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Um, I'm gonna start with a couple of emails. Um, the first one is from Jennifer Chapman. Um, "There is likely to be a surge similar to what the Eldorado National Forest is, is experiencing. Many residents are supportive of closing off Clay Street on the Mosquito End. We would like to experiment with this, which we know will involve using the Main Street end for access. I don't understand why you aren't going to use the trip to green strategy this year. There are many things to learn from this about using Fornie and the East End overpass instead of left-hand turns. It makes no sense to cancel this green light through traffic plan for Highway fifty this year. Regarding the Highway fifty hotspot report, this study needs to address our historic districts in the Highway fifty corridor as a specific traff- traffic management concern related to preserving character." And then the second, uh, email received on this item is from Tammy Dans. She writes, "Evening Mayor Sarah Gosa and council members, Ed and Tammy Ingram, friends of Clay Street and our residents on Clay Street. We have been giving suggestions for traffic calming measures for Clay Street and additional arteries for over a year. We fully believe that it's not solely an Apple Hill traffic issue. It has become bigger Tahoe returnees, out-of-town vacationers, holiday travelers, skiers, et cetera. It is visually evident that every weekend, Clay Street and adjoining arteries are experiencing more non-resident traffic flow to avoid the backlog on Highway fifty. Action needs to be taken ASAP to reduce the impact on our residents. These residential developments were not developed for traffic connector routes, only for residential use and emergency response points. Safety issues still exist, speeding, sorry, speeding, running stop signs, verbal and physical altercations with residents, as well as noise level, and to mention the delay in emergency response to our locals if needed. Again, suggestions for Clay Street and arterial streets. Stop signs at every side street in both directions. One-way eastbound mosquito road to Anderson on weekends. One-way top of Coleman eastbound to Clay Street on weekends. No right turn westbound Carson Road to Dimity Lane. These are ideas to start with, inexpensive pilot program for the city to put into place, not for residents to pay for. Signage is enforceable by local law enforcement. Nineteen ninety-nine traffic calming measures do not meet two thousand twenty traffic calming needs. Signage is the simplest and cost-effective start to resolve multiple traffic-related issues. Thank you, Ed and Tammy Ingram." So, um, we do have one member of the public with her arm raised, with her hand raised. Ruth, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thanks for taking my call. Um, I just wanted to bring up, and maybe this is off-base, because I'm reading the item, uh, pursue traffic measures to alleviate congestion, but I just want to bring up, I think, you know, to, to really brainstorm and think this through. I mean, you're all familiar with Daffodil Hill, right? Daffodil Hill became too popular. They absolutely could not deal with all the people who would come and park and block the roads, and they closed. They closed because it was just too much, and it was causing too much of an impact. And I know we can't close Apple Hill, and certainly we can't stop people going from Tahoe. My impression was it was just exacerbated during Apple Hill. There's always Tahoe traffic, um, throughout the year for summer fun and winter skiing and such. And I don't live in that area, so I don't really know the impacts on Clay Street, et cetera. But I was under the impression it was made just much worse during those fall months during Apple Hill. And I just would like to really think about how there might be ways to have fewer people go to Apple Hill. And I really think there could maybe be fewer, um, permits given to growers to have, you know, um, open stands, maybe they could alternate. I don't know, I don't know the answer, but I just think trying to put up stop signs and speed bumps and all that, if you have masses of people coming up, I, I just don't see how that can be resolved. I think, I think it'd be wise to look at ways to discourage so many people from coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Calling user two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so you are not gonna stop the traffic that can constitutionally move between San Francisco, Sacramento, up to Tahoe, and back. Um, you can only come up with plans that mitigate it to reduce the impacts upon us that live in this working city. So, shutting down Main Street, um, seems to be a bad idea. If you want to close down the parallel parking spots to let the restaurants live or the businesses live, that's fine. But you have to be re- really cognitive of traffic flow. Highway fifty is back to parking lot status. We all know it. If anyone's out there and about, we all know it. So, don't compound it by ever shutting down Main Street. Um, the only thing I could say is maybe direct staff to look into, is it, so, these people, I watch them like snakes. They're using wayfinding, wayfinding apps on their phone. They're from out of the area, they don't know the backstreets, but they're on their phone and saying, turn left, turn right, turn left, turn right. If, is there a cheap way to put up a jamming system at the corner of Clay and Mosquito, um, Dimity and Carson? I mean, I know some really good hackers that are like eleven years old, they could probably come up with a system, and they'd sell it to you for a certain dollar amount, and you just jam those wayfinding apps. And so they're all confused, and they just sit there on Highway fifty like a bunch of schmucks. And let me get to my home and dinner and shower in time. So, I'm, just think, I don't want to say it outside the box. That's it. That's all. Bye.
Thanks, Michael. We gotta get him home with his little.
Yeah, he's gotta go home.
Last call for item twelve point five. No more comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Bring it back, uh, to council.
One thing I would like to remind everybody is, as this thing has grown, it's way beyond Clay Street now, and Coleman and Bed, I mean, that whole circus absolutely takes place. The last couple of years, what's really concerned me is the chain of vehicles that starts on Broadway, comes down Upper Main, comes west down Upper Main Street, then one after another, hook a, a left turn on Cedar Ravine, and immediately turn into Left Pacific Street, and it's bumper to bumper, all the way back to, uh, Pacific, uh, Spring Street and Highway fifty.
Yeah.
Cause, you know why?
Because, well, yeah, and we've, we've, we all know why, and, and we can find that eleven-year-old that might.
Let's find that eleven-year-old and jam him.
Probably just looking for. But that's what I, like, for this year, uh, you know, we now know that the hotspot study has not matured enough, and they're not gonna do the green light and that, so. I'm just really concerned that, uh, you know, what we're seeing going on in the national forests and, uh, you know, all the state park systems, that Apple Hill is going to be just extreme this year. Now, what can we do to put in place just for this year, so that we can, it, respond quickly? So that Chief Rand or Chief Poderas sees an issue, they'll have some sense of authority as to actually going out and maybe having to have manned road closures. If, if, if there isn't really a, a person there anymore, um, I saw what happened to some of the signs that we started out with that were on Clay Street. They got vandalized, they got profanity written on them, uh, you can't tell me blanky-blank what street I can use, um.
Yeah, and this goes to the vice mayor's comments at the beginning of, of our council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, it's, I, at some, at some point, we need to have a, um, just a, uh, meaningful and, uh, discussion with the county and, and, and work cooperatively to find a way to, uh, to, to try to alleviate some of this pressure through some creative solutions. And I know that, uh, uh, Supervisor Verkamp tried a couple of years ago with a, a program with shuttles, but that, those shuttles just came.
They spent a lot of money to.
They spent, I think, eighty, seventy, eighty grand on that program, and those shuttles brought people right down to Chanel School Road, which then dumped them into Placerville.
Right.
So, so Placerville, in my opinion, takes it on the chin, on a, i- any solution that we get, we take it on the chin.
Right.
Nobody else takes it on the chin.
Nope.
Nobody.
No, I agree.
Tahoe doesn't, Apple Hill doesn't. We take it on the chin. So, all the solutions for our problems is, is us taking it on the chin. So, you know, we, we may have to, once again, do that, and I think it's imperative that the city, uh, begin conversations, meaningful conversations and cooperative conversations with the county to work towards a broader s- solution. Now, the hotspot study is gonna help Highway fifty, but I don't think the hotspot study is gonna go, and correct me if I'm wrong, gonna go off into all the, uh, the feeder and all the other roads that, uh, are throughout the Apple Hill area of congestion. Now, this is also compounded by, by the issues of Eldorado, of the national forest and everybody going up there.
Well, but then. But if the green light thing works, which I, I, if we, they can just keep that traffic going, the people aren't gonna be wanting to get off into our feeders.
Again, we take it on the chin. Our, our residents.
Our residents are.
Lose, lose our ability to even go across town at that time.
North south, yeah.
Exactly, and I get it, but you know what? Well, let's go back when Highway fifty was built.
We knew, we knew north, south.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
So, that's a whole nother issue.
Yeah, it is, but that's what's wrong, and here we are.
What?
You know, I think the best thing we can do is direct staff to come back with potential traffic measures to alleviate the traffic congestion.
Yeah.
Tell people they can drive cars through Placerville.
Because I think they have some resources that, that might help us do that, and then we can have a meaningful conversation about what that looks like, I.
So, that, that emotion, Vice Mayor.
Uh.
I'd like it to include some cost estimates to what it would be to have a police officer, um.
To, any staffing costs?
Yeah, staffing costs to, and, you know, larger barricades. Um, we had some stuff that I almost told some of the Verkamp engineering, no, I was gonna borrow the Verkamp engineering stuff, because it was bigger,
Borrow.
because it was more for a high, higher speed, so it was more substantial.
Maybe we could have Doug park one of his.
Messy.
Cross, cross, yeah.
Yes, yes, so we've got, because we're gonna have an issue where, um, we're gonna have an emergency situation, we're not gonna be able to respond to.
Yeah, fire.
And if there is a power, what if there's a PSPs there?
Oh, my gosh.
Right.
You know, one of these things.
Which is very li- I mean, not likely, but it could certainly happen.
It could happen.
It's, it's a distinct possibility.
Yes.
Okay, so I've moved twelve point five with the addition that, uh, any solutions also have a cost estimate associated with them.
I.
A second pass.
Okay, all right, uh, yes, we have, uh, Ms. Neves.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, we're happy to look at these options. I do want to caution you that the more things we add, the more time I'm probably gonna need to generate options, so.
I'm, I would rather have you come back with a, a thorough, um, look at some of these things than making it date certain as the twenty-fifth, if we have to go one more council meeting.
Okay.
I mean, it might, is that, I mean, we're pushing it, but.
Yeah, because Labor Day is what?
The, the fourth, yeah.
Oh, no.
September.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
That's when it all.
Unless we have a special, well, no, still wouldn't, yeah, better meaning.
No, nothing like that.
Oh, I just think we're gonna be in a big mess, and it's, we're kinda.
You know, we're, uh, honestly, we're a little late to the.
We are, we're late, we are.
Yeah, we are, we should just.
Yeah.
Well, well.
Coming up with this.
But we were counting on the green light thing, I think.
I know I was.
Well, and, and, and we have new information, uh, about the, the, uh, the Eldorado, the national forest impacting us, as well as, you know, compounding that with Apple Hill.
Let me ask you this, Dennis, uh, as you, is, is the Transportation Commission, or Supervisor Verkamp's office, working with the Highway Patrol this year to close some of the exits?
No, well, the Apple.
For Apple Hill?
Yeah, they, I think that's a.
I know we've, again, I think the counties had to pay the Highway Patrol for that, right?
They have.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, they have, and Apple Hill, I think, kicked in.
For that one left turn at, on, um, they only have the.
Yes.
Do you know the answer to that, Rebecca?
Um, well, as far as the working with CHP, no, I don't. Um, I did want to, uh, address the trip to green comment of, um, why aren't we, why are we canceling it? We're not canceling it. We actually, it took a little bit of time to find the funding for that, um, much to Councilmember Thomas's point about taking it to chin for that. Unfortunately, trip to green does cross, you know, block the cross traffic, but, um, as far as that, that as a potential solution, we're still looking at that, which just happened to be the timing of the grant that came to fruition.
Oh.
So.
Right, the grant was delayed, the deadlines were delayed because of COVID by Caltrans. I believe we did receive the grant, now, right?
Correct.
Have time to get the consultant, the feasibility study, get it in. I mean, we'd be halfway through or more through the, the year.
Right.
Um, and it just doesn't give us the time to do it.
We have to do a feasibility study to do the.
I was just gonna, why did, what's so hard about turning them back on green?
Well, you do, you think about that. When you, when you close those roads, where does everybody go?
Or you have to do outreach.
What kind of detours need to set up so people know where they're going? And all of that information, that's what Caltrans will require us to do.
Okay.
Look, no.
Yeah.
They need, they'll require us to show what those impacts will be.
I think the, the, the local people know what to do, you know.
They do, but not everybody that comes through those, up for Highway forty-nine, for example, is gonna be able.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we have a whole state highway that.
I forgot about that other.
Let's just have to close that one.
Let's close that one, too.
Hey, I'd be, I'd be happy with that.
Let's just close everything.
Uh, yeah, so that's, but that, that's a good clarification, uh, Rebecca, that this, we didn't choose to not do, uh, trip to green, it was.
It was chosen for us.
Source, yes, it was chosen for us, very, very well put.
You're right, we're too late, we're late.
Um, okay, so we have a, we have a first and a second.
Right.
Is this a, now, did that?
What are we voting, I?
So, I, I, to return on August twenty-fifth, is that, is that a realistic expectation, or should we, I mean, in all sincerity, I know you have a lot of projects going on right now, so. So, so the first meeting in September, is that more realistic?
I, I, I think what I would request is let, let's put it at August twenty-fifth, and Rebecca's gonna scream at me, I know, but that's okay. I'm used to that.
Well, she just passed out, I.
She's passed out.
But, but noting that we will do our best to come back with something, but no guarantee, but it may take us to extend more, so give us that flexibility if we have to. Again, we wanted to try to have something by that Labor Day weekend, that's why we were.
Right.
You know, trying to push this, um, and a lot has caught up on us, like, say, be, between the, the grant getting delayed, so we couldn't do that study. Um, and everything with COVID-nineteen has really just pushed things back, so, uh, we will do our best, and Rebecca will remind you when we leave here tonight, that she's not gonna make it by that, but we're, we're gonna do our best to help that.
Well, and I know, I, I'm pretty sure the, the vice mayor and I are available to meet, like, we needed to sit down with, uh, uh, the Eldorado Wyans. the Eldorado Wine Association, or any of the, the farms up there, any of the associations, we're happy to sit down and have a conversation, because when we're talking about funds, this is gonna be an, an issue where we don't have the funds to start putting a bunch of police officers at manned barriers, so we're gonna have to have that discussion with some of the, our counterparts, or at least some of the people up in those areas.
Good neighbors.
Good neighbors, yes.
But I have been told time and time again that it's very hard to get money from the Apple Hill folks. And, um, and, and that's not a put down, uh, you know, I realize they're not swimming in money either, but, so I don't know how much, you know, um, we can count on that, so
Count on it, yeah, no, it's, this is all last minute as well, but
Okay, so my motion, I guess my motion is still for August twenty fifth, if they can, if they can make twenty fifth, if not, then
They can. They'll do their best, right.
Right, and I think we had a second from either Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Have the white screen show the city engineer.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so, uh, with that then, we'll do roll call vote.
Mayor Surigusa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, so then that leads directly into item twelve point six, uh, which will provide comments and direct staff to schedule a community chat in September to obtain further public input on the traffic calming policy and, and resource manual for the city of Placerville. And we, you know, the more we looked at this one, the more we thought, this really does, you know, we had the, uh, a, a call, uh, with some of the, the residents along Clay Street and a couple of the other streets, but it really wasn't a holistic conversation that we had. And so, um, we really thought that the community conversation was the best way to get the entire city of Placerville's input to the extent that we can, uh, to have a better, more informed decision about these traffic, uh, the traffic calming manual, and so that's what's, uh, in front of us here today. So again, Ms., Ms. Neves on this one.
Well, quite frankly, Mayor, you did a great job, I really don't We did a manual, uh, no, but I mean, all your points are very valid and very well put, thank you for, for
Of course.
That concludes staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions you
I like it, I like it, all right, uh, any, any questions, uh, for Ms. Neves at this point? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment, and again, uh, since this is gonna be coming back, I, I'm, I'm asking folks to, uh, probably reserve some of their comments, but if there's something in the process that you want to highlight, uh, then do that.
Could I suggest you be more specific and say what we're looking for?
Uh, yes, go ahead, actually.
No, you.
Well, no, I think all we're, at this point, all we're really looking for is if there's something, uh, amiss in the, in the process, to let us know, because your specific comments to the traffic manual will be when it comes back to us
Cause we don't wanna
Yeah, we just spent
Yeah, cause we've
It's about scheduling the meeting.
Yeah, this is about scheduling the meeting.
We're scheduling a meeting.
Right, we, we, we don't wanna talk about
That's all we're gonna, that's all we're discussing.
Yeah, so I've been, uh, uh, asked the public to, uh, uh, hold their, their thoughts for the most part on this one, so
For the meeting.
For the meeting, yes.
Yeah, this is just a schedule.
If that makes
Mayor, if I could add to that, if, if they want to email us comments, uh, send those to
Yes.
Me or myself or the city engineer, happy to receive those, that gives us input prior to going in, that we're glad to accept those.
Actually, I think that's a great idea.
Yep, and all of us as well, cause I'm sure we would all
Exactly.
And it gives us more time to look those over as well. Okay, so with that, uh, we'll go ahead and open up the, the comment period.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point six. And Mr. Mayor, I, can I just get some clarification, um, on the public comments? Um, did you say that, well, see, I have received like four emails on this. Would you like those to be held, or shall I read those?
Yes, um, unless they're pertaining to the meeting itself, um, any of the more specific comments, we're, we're gonna, if you could forward them to, if, if we haven't already received them, tip forward to City Council, uh, and then we, we can review those prior to having the community chat.
Okay, so, uh, we'll start with Colin User Two.
Good evening, Council, I'll let you go home soon, uh, just a, just a hypothetical. Uh, now we have a new police chief, and I just wonder what his thoughts are on if I see another vehicle with a Marin license plate frame, am I allowed or not allowed to run them off the road when they're clogging up my streets? I mean, um, just hypothetically.
How do we understand?
I mean, that, that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Gobish.
Taking public from five two five.
Uh, I apologize, are we on twelve point six?
Yes.
Um, so this is Leo Koschan again, and I just wanted to, um, first, thank you for listening to me last time and providing a better ex- uh, explanation. And then, secondly, that, you know, your staff's doing a great job, and I know we're in a COVID crisis, but if you're able to do chats for, you know, different ways to get input, again, I think that's something you should think about applying to many issues. And I'll close with just saying, I've been down this road, and if you call a meeting of two hundred people, it doesn't matter when you call it, it's gonna be a disaster, small's better, chats are better, thank you, bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna go ahead and read, um, these emails that we received. Um, this one is from Jennifer Chapman. She writes, "In general, I'm concerned that you're not creating a comprehensive traffic management plan in the face of the expanding Sacramento and Bay Area traffic effects on our neighborhoods. Instead, you are creating an inefficient and bureaucratic process, asking citizens to get permits and go to the planning commission. In short, to volunteer to do the work you should be getting a grant to do." This is "Community transportation planning in the middle of a major regional traffic corridor. The city is always getting millions of dollars from transportation sources to do all kinds of projects, which many, many of which are facilitating more growth, that is, creating more impacts on our historic resources in our neighborhoods. Please seek funding for a comprehensive traffic management plan that includes traffic calming in all residential areas." And, um, then she goes on to include, "Also, please provide a list of all city of Placerville roads with their classification as residential, collector, minor arterial, et cetera, and definitions of the classifications. People can't comment on the manual about their street if they don't know how it is being classified. For example, Clay Street should be classified and managed as residential street, not a collector. Mosquito is a collector." And, um
So Regina, if the other ones are similar, since we, we were gonna hold the comments specifically just to the actual meeting in, in and of itself, if the other ones are the same, I would ask the, the same, uh, to forward them all on to us so that we can review those prior to, um, uh, the meeting.
I received that one.
And I, I, I did ask, and I, I did receive that one from, uh, from Jennifer, yes.
Sorry about that, I guess I got you mixed up, um, then
No problem.
Then I'll save the remainder, so we'll just do a last call on, uh, twelve point six. I don't see any, any hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. All right, we'll bring it back to the council, and happy to entertain a motion.
Well, I agree, we need to meet, but what day do we wanna meet?
That is true.
And how is, how is this meeting gonna be held?
Uh, that's a good, I think, a good question.
You know, I mean, the reality is, we can't do it in a room. Can we, can we do a meeting of this nature in a Zoom?
If we're gonna try.
I think it's gonna fall under the same thing that you talked about earlier, that it's just It's just about
Yeah, I mean, running to the same issues as, um, you know, we have on any of the other, on the more
Exactly.
This is, this is some emotional, but it's more data.
Right, I, that's, there is a distinct difference.
And I, and I think there's, there's, there's a very distinct difference in terms of
And, and I really like the idea of sending us emails, or, you know, that maybe we could, and maybe we can have a meeting and go over, you know.
Could we meet like this, and then have the community call in?
Well
And talk about the
The idea of a community chat is, is it's not us sitting up here, them sitting out there. It's about everybody hearing all the things and being able to, to communicate back and forth and have dialogue over an issue, as opposed to this setting where one person can speak and, and, and managing that on a Zoom, I'm not sure how to do that, cause that is a lot different than what we're doing here. And, and that whole concept of a community chat, uh, with, let's say we get ninety people
Right.
That really wanna participate, and so we have ninety people on a Zoom.
What if we, what if we broke it into areas, you know, like five areas and had
Different parts of the city.
Different parts of the city and had
Well, no, you, this is a traffic calming manual that covers the entire city.
But it's affecting them, you know, I mean
Plus, you get only a, you get the parochial view of
Yeah, you don't wanna get into a lot of specifics.
But like you said, you had the, the Clay Street meeting.
Yeah.
So what if you had, uh, another, and, you know
Everybody talks about Clay Street, but there's, Esti Way has three of them.
So what if we had Esti Way then do those, you know?
You know, and Eldorado High School, you can't imagine Eldorado High without those speed bumps.
This is really, this is really about a manual on, it's not about specifics. It's more about concepts that we wanna apply to our city.
Right.
So, in that, while, you know, cl- the people who really want to focus in on Clay Street and what happens between, uh, uh, noon on Sunday and five o'clock is really not as pertinent, it, it would apply to a bigger issue of what that looks like in our management.
Citywide, right.
Right.
So they, that particular instance, they would use something out of the manual to address that.
To address that, yeah.
Right.
So this is more global load and, uh
Did I say, I mean, Rebecca, does that make sense, or how would you, you know, to have the best input for your purposes of developing a manual, how does that look?
Yeah, so, I mean, um, you know, obviously, we're soliciting comments on the devices that are listed, uh, as part of the manual, but, you know, we do actually, um, it does a, a pretty comprehensive, um, evaluation of, you know, some of the process. We have this flow chart, if something works better one way or another, um, you know, to approach implementing traffic calming items, uh, on a road, then absolutely, like, let's take a look at how we wanna, how we wanna administer the process. And part of the reason why we had gone through, um, some of the effort in developing this process was to essentially just level the playing field and be more database versus emotional based, you know. I, um, I, I hear the concerns on Clay Street, and I, um, you know, I sympathize and have compassion for the emotional argument in it, and I will also say, I have, you know, traffic data reports from our police department giving me traffic volumes and speed that's within, you know, the, the legally posted speed, and I'm not saying that there isn't an issue, I'm just saying that I just, I have data, and so do we wanna focus on the data? Do we wanna have an emotional component to the evaluation process? Um, so these are kinda some of the things I wanna really consider. And then kinda going back to some of the questions and comments regarding funding, um, unless there's a fatality, it's actually pretty difficult to get grant funding for some of these, uh, for traffic calming. Um, the city does not have excess roadway funds to be implementing these things kinda willy nilly, so we really do, number one, wanna methodically think it through, and number two, find a secure funding source. And if we can't, if we don't have a nexus for doing that, the data isn't there to support it, then we, we need to figure out, do we have this emotional scoring component that allows us to say, we hear that the data's not there, and we don't want to, um, ignore these comments. So that's kinda where it was, is, it was headed.
So I, I have another data question.
Sure.
How many, maybe in a percentage or number or your guest estimation, how many people, other than Clay Street, have a concern about this manual, that, that's in areas, other areas of the town?
I haven't heard from any, but, I mean, perhaps, you know, for example, I didn't receive any of the comments that were sent, um, on this item, so, uh, I mean, I haven't seen any other ones.
Okay, so really, I mean, let's be honest, this is precipitated by mostly concerns of people on Clay Street, and not the whole town.
And the other, the other area is Bedford, that we've, we've had a lot of complaints about Bedford.
And that ties into
To Clay Street, yeah, it's the whole
It's, it's, it's very close, but, yeah, it's that one area that's, and that's what I was
So, what are we, are we creating this whole process for
Just for a certain area.
For a certain area and including everybody, or, yes, or
I will say, we have received comments on Acacia, um, in the past as well, for traffic calming, is the high school traffic.
Is it the high school?
Yeah.
We, we do get complaints about, let's just say, what it is speeding on quite a few, I'll, I'll, I'll name Cedar Ravine, we've had several comments about speeding on Cedar Ravine. Pacific Street is another one that I've had complaints about speeding on Pacific Street.
Final Street.
So although you say it's, how many people express interest in the traffic calming manual, only since we brought it up, don't blame just a few, but we have had complaints about speeding and developing methods to slow down the traffic in quite a few other areas besides just Clay Street.
Part of that's an enforcement issue, and some of it
Well, and I, I can't tell you how many years ago I said, let's just put speed bumps all over this whole town, cause I think that would take care of it.
All right.
It sure hasn't been on the high school.
So I, I just wanted to make sure that we're having the meeting for the right reasons, the right people, and
Well, I don't see, like, what you're bringing up, and Mike brought it up earlier, I, I, with this system that we're having to go on, I, I just don't think it's gonna work, unless we, unless we do some homework and have them submit. But like you're saying, that kind of eliminates chat, but yet, it also, though, we get their opinions, and, you know, um
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a less than ideal community chat than what Placerville's had in, in previous, pre-COVID, yes.
I, I just wanted to add, we did some pretty, I, I think I could give some help, so we could do this, for example, um, in our, we did a meeting for Upper Broadway, or not Upper Broadway, but for Broadway last week with our, uh, on our civic-led program, unfortunately, we only had a few participants, but there's some pretty neat things, and this was a Zoom program where they were able to do an interactive survey while we went along. So there's some things like that that we could probably implement along with this, or we'll need to do a little work, but for example, you could throw this out there and then have people vote on it in terms of, what do you think about this traffic measure? Is this good, or is this bad, and, and et cetera, so there may be some other things that we could actually add into a Zoom meeting, if you will, that, no, it's never gonna be what we want in terms of what we had before in our community chats, but we can maybe look at ways to enhance the, the effect of this all.
Well, that's kinda what I was thinking, along those terms, that, you know, we could do some
Because I think the point is, I don't have another, I, I don't know what else to do.
Right.
We're, we're in this, this COVID thing, and who knows how long we're going to be in it, hopefully, shorter the longer, but right now, it's not looking no good, and so I think that we need to look at more ways to have that interaction, uh, you know, with this, uh, virtual meetings that were required.
If you have a recommended date?
I do not, what I, what I think I would do is maybe go back and, uh, I was looking, you know, this, this building is pretty open, right now, because there's nothing, nothing going on in the evenings, pretty much, um, so what I think I'd like to do is we'll go back and, and you give us the permission to, to select a date, we'll call the council on if those dates work for you, and come up with a date, and, and, and even again, so that's conducive to, uh, the most public we can get. But we had also talked about last, if you wanna do this, perhaps sending, uh, something out in our, uh, utility bill in September to announce it, so that people, that's the best way we've found to get the information out, whether or not you want to do that, and, uh, we got a couple of other things for the utility bill, but maybe we can combine this one with those, and encourage the public to participate in some
I still think if we invite comments, that it would be good, and that way people can get everything off their chest, and, you know, um, and, and we could, you know, then we could kinda see where, how many feel that same way, you know, we could get a pretty good idea on, you know, where they're coming from and what they would say, even if they, we had them all here in the same room, you know.
Yeah, I mean, writing comments would certainly be helpful, I think, um, on this, and I know Councilmember Taylor had, had, uh
She's patiently waiting.
Yes, so
I was just wondering if we need a motion for this item. Um, I do agree that written comments ahead of time would be great, but I, I don't think that we should be putting things off forever because we can't meet in person, I think that we should set a date for this and do it over Zoom, and I like the idea of adding a survey feature. I've been on lots of webinars and Zoom meetings where they have that, um, so I think that we can do this, and I think we should do this, and if you need a motion, I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I don't, I'm not sure what she's...
A good date.
Well, he, uh, staff can, I'll second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and staff will come back with a, with a date for us, uh...
I thought we voted on it. Yeah, well, yeah, and that was part of the motion.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I just wanted to clarify that staff was coming back with a date. All right, so we have a first and a second, further conversations, comments, none. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, um, let us move on to item twelve point seven, and this is, uh, to adopt a resolution increasing the youth basketball, uh, early bird player registration fee by nine dollars, uh, from a hundred and thirteen to a hundred and twenty-two, uh, effective August thirty-first, uh, twenty-twenty, and increasing the youth basketball post-early bird player registration fee from nine, uh, wait, is it? Oh, no, yeah, same thing, from one twenty-three to one thirty-two per player, effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty. And Mr. Zeller has this for us tonight.
Yes, good evening, um, I've got the last, um, agenda item of the night, um, on here. So this is, uh, becoming a regular item that, uh, is, again, it's put together by Mr. Lishman, who always does a superb job of balancing costs with fees, and, um, this is coming up on our fourth year of the march toward our minimum wage, getting up to fifteen dollars an hour, so this upcoming year, it's gonna be fourteen an hour. And this cost plus our higher officials' costs have compelled us to raise our costs for fees for youth basketball again this year. Um, the staff report has got, um, all the detail on the, the impacts to the program as far as our costs go, and then what the recommended, um, thought process was toward going for the nine dollar, uh, cost raising for both the early bird and then the regular season, um, fees. So if you have any questions, I can answer those, if not, um, I guess we'll move to a, to a, a decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zeller. Uh, any questions, uh, for Terry at this moment?
I was, another thing that just really floored me, I was reading, and now I can't find it. Uh, who raised the fee to three thousand dollars?
Oh, the refs.
The refs, is that, I mean, that's quite costly, isn't it, and...
Yes. Yeah, we...
That's a huge impact.
Yeah, it is, it is a pretty big impact, and, you know, it's, it's getting harder to get officials to, um, to, uh, do these seasons, and so, um, we feel fortunate to have, uh, still have the availability of our officials. Uh, but yes, it is a major cost.
Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Public comment is now open for twelve point seven. Colin user two.
Good evening, council, uh, could be quick. Um, so the city suspended the public pool, and now we're finding out the public pool, with all its chlorine, is one of the safest places to be. I find it fascinating that the city runs these programs. Um, I would think that public and, um, private entities could run these programs without public tax dollars, but anyway, um, I also find it fascinating that something this simple wouldn't be on consent calendar unless there's a state law that says it has to have a public hearing. Something this simple should be on a consent calendar, and I see all the time things more complex on consent calendar, so if somebody could just address that real quick, that'd be great. That's all, bye.
Thank you.
I believe that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for more discussion, or...
I'll move and approve the item.
One second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, uh, any further discussions? Ah, yes, Kara has a comment.
I'd just like to say, Terry, I like your optimism that we're gonna have these programs. I really hope we do.
Yeah, well, we, we, yeah, a big part of the job these days is just, uh, trying to plan for every contingency and every date that comes and goes.
And then, um, just one follow-up with that comment, in terms of tax dollars, just to clarify, these programs pay for themselves, that's why we're raising the fee, correct?
Yeah, they, yeah, that's the idea, is that we're trying to make them cost-neutral, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, with the exception of the city pool, which is why we had a closer for this here.
Correct, which has got a massive subsidy.
Yep, all right, thanks.
All right, uh, so with, uh, that, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zeller. All right, we'll move on to item thirteen, uh, which are, uh, reports from other agency meetings, uh, the first being transit.
No meeting.
No meeting, okay, easy enough, uh, Transportation Commission.
We did have a meeting, and we pretty much discussed practically everything of importance to, um... Dennis, I did, um, I had a printout of, um, uh, Woodrow Deloria's, uh, comments, and you were talking about that transportation planning...
Right.
Thing, um, it said, it, it says that, um, twenty to twen- to twenty forty Eldorado County re- yeah. Okay, the RTP policy element has been posted on the project webpage located online here, and they do give, it's, you know, the, and it says, "The consultant team has submitted the draft environmental impact report, um, and the draft action element was distributed to the advisory committee in July, um, and the board in August for approval, and the draft financial element and the draft EIR will both be presented to the EDC TC board in September. The final RIP and EIR will be presented to the board for approval in November twenty-twenty." So...
And there's a forty-five day comment period...
Right.
Um, at the August, uh, meeting in conjunction with the release of the document, so...
Right, and then they talked about that, the, and this is, things pertaining to Placerville, they talked about the Highway Fifty hotspot study, and, um, Western Placerville interchanges, uh, Upper Broadway bike lanes, Broadway sidewalk project, Main Street Cedar Ravine, Clay Street intersection improvement project, uh, the Placerville Drive bicycle and pedestrian facilities project, Placerville Station Two, um, and then, um, they talked about the Eldorado Transit Authority, um, the zero emission bus fleet that they're gonna buy, and, uh, then the Caltrans, the US Highway Fifty Camino Safety Project, so, it was, this is...
They, they are very busy, and they, you know, you know, while I still, you know, what, while this is important, the, uh, western, not the western, the, uh, our regional transit pla- re- regional transportation plan, I, I think there's some missing elements there that need to be addressed in terms of, uh, for the city.
Yeah.
They do a lot of work on behalf of the city, and they do a lot of great work on behalf of the city.
That department is just really something else.
In terms of getting money for programs and projects, and no, no dis- I don't wanna disregard that fact a- as we also work to improve it for the city.
Well said.
That's all, that's all my report.
All right, thank you, uh, LaFco.
I wanna thank Councilmember Taylor for going on my behalf.
Yeah, it was, it was fun, I haven't been to a LaFco meeting in a while. Um, we covered an annexation for a cell tower, reviewed a grand jury report, um, regarding fire districts. There was some discussion about fees, um, and adoption of a new fee schedule, and there was discussion about reducing, um, training funds for commissioners, um, but that did not go through, it was kind of a moot point, um, so that kind of summarizes the LaFco meeting.
Okay, thank you, council member. Uh, Steakhog, I, I made those comments at the beginning, uh, in terms of the, the new equity, um, commission, as well as the discussion over the, the four county areas in terms of, uh, uh, the money being apportioned by, um, instead of competitive, by a formulaic, um, and I, still my belief that Steakhog will ultimately stick to a competitive process, and that's it on Steakhog. Uh, Placerville Fire Safety Council.
Um, I hope everybody received the packet that they sent out, um, I, I thought it was very in- uh, informative, and if everybody will read it, um, will certainly gain from it. Um, they're just, uh, they're doing their inspections when they're called up upon, and I think that's working out really well, pe- people seem to feel comfortable, you know, calling on them, um, and, um... So, yeah, they're just going right along, and, um, I think they're doing a lot of good for our little community.
Oh, it's great, I had a question on the, the mailer, did that go to all Placerville residents?
Placerville residents, yeah.
That's great, that was, that was really nice mailing.
They got a, they got a grant for that, and so, uh, they thought that was important to... And then, there's another fellow, and I can't, should've written his name, and they're talking about, and maybe Dennis, you might know more about this, um, or maybe you do, Mark, about the radio, uh, folks, the, it's kinda like, you know, the, what do the truckers use, the, uh, anyway, it's...
CBs, ham radios.
And they're talking about ham, ham radio, and how important they are in this particular community, and especially for the outline districts to get, you know, if there's any kind of a, um, you know, emergency or anything, and that is really, uh, going over big, a lot of people are showing interest, and, um, they have to buy their own equipment and everything, and they're doing it, so, um, I think we'll hear more about that later on.
All right, thank you, council member. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to item fourteen, uh, request for future agenda items. Any council member have anything? All right, uh, seen...
Just, uh, I, I said to you, maybe...
Oh, yes, yeah, for everybody, uh, Councilmember Borelli, save, save your, um, traffic manual, commi- commie manual, so staff and us don't have to spend more money to recopy them, and, uh, it wastepaper, so...
Yeah, it will be a future, I don't worry.
Yes, so thanks, thank you for that. Uh, all right, so, so none other, uh, we've already did item fifteen earlier, the upcoming items, um, contract with RBI, League of, League, uh, League of Cities Voting Delicate Resolution, um, receiving files filed to design draft menu for, uh, draft memo, uh, for Cedar Ravine Sewer, uh, Spring Mosquito Construction Contract Award, uh, and CARES Act funding, uh, so those are some of the upcoming items, and, uh, at least we, we beat last meeting by about fifty minutes or so, so, uh, at eleven eighteen, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. Thanks, Joe.